Welcome to the Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, regular City Council meeting of the Troutdale City Council. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance and I'll ask Counselor Andrews to lead us.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to recall it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I know he's on the roll.
Counselor Andrews.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor One.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Davidson.
Here.
Counselor Leeny.
Here.
Mayor Ritma.
Here.
Ray, is there an agenda update?
Yes, Mayor, there's a mistake in the title. I made a mistake on item number 5.2, 2024 Troutdale Visitor Center Update. That should be 2024 Troutdale Tourism Update. We had a visitor center update last fall. Even though Marley says you'll include some visitor center stuff in there, but it's mostly going to be about all the work we're doing to promote tourism in Troutdale. That's it. So I guess remove the word visitor center and make it tourism and we're good. And that's it.
Very good, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number two, public comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with the consent of council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. So we'll start off inviting public comment. Let's start with anyone participating on Zoom. Wish to make.
Uh, Ritma.
Paul?
Um, yes, Polo and Cox Troutdale. Um, okay, I was gonna mention I'll be sending this in print to the, or in email to the council members, but might be easier to comprehend in writing. But just for the public benefits, I'm gonna go ahead and read it. Recently reviewed the Troutdale Municipal Code text regarding the Town Center Advisory Board. One section is not entirely clear to me, 2.20.130(c)(8) reads, "Should a particular committee or commission fail to name a representative to the committee by the first meeting of each committee year, which begins on July 1, the council shall appoint any Troutdale resident to fill that committee spot for that term." One of a committee's first regularly scheduled meeting of the new fiscal year occurs after the first scheduled meeting of TCAB. For example, from past history, Historic Landmarks Commission has been beating the fourth Thursday of the month while TCAB meets the third Thursday of the month. One solution would be for TCAB to not meet in July, but that might be an important time for them. Another possibility would be for HLC to be unrepresented, unrepresented at the July meeting, or HLC could hold a special election meeting earlier. The Troutdale Municipal Code also states under 2.20.020f, unless otherwise specified in the law or action creating the committee, a member's term on the committee shall expire on June 30th of the year the member's term has been designated to expire. If no qualified successor has been appointed as of that date, a member's term shall continue until the member's successor is appointed and qualified. The issue is confused further by Section 4 of Ordinance 876, which is the ordinance that created TCAB, which reads, "The chairs of the aforementioned committees in Section 3 are directed to ensure that the appointment of one of their committee members to the Town Center Advisory Board, or Committee, is to occur between April 1 and June 30 on an annual basis." This, this means the committee appointments for TCAB occur immediately before when new members of those committees would be joining, making them ineligible to be on TCAB. That didn't get adequately translated into the TMC guidance. As it turned out in 2024, every committee's appointment to TCAB occurred during their July meetings. Personally, I think it's better to appoint the TCAB after any new members of the other committees are on board. But that's not what the ordinance says or the code implies. Bottom line is the council needs to decide whether to revise the ordinance to allow for July appointments, as was the practice last year, or require that the committees adhere to the schedule in the existing ordinance. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul. Anyone else on Zoom?
Mayor Ritma.
Yes, yes.
Adrian Custer, Troutdale. I wanted to call to council's attention tonight, the sometimes an increasingly hazardous drive up and down Buxton Avenue. The, the biggest issues that I see lately are twofold. One is in the, the tight passageway when there is parking, parallel parking along the street towards Historic Columbia River Highway, particularly when the vehicles parking along the street are very large and not necessarily all the way up to the curb. It can make drivers, especially coming down the hill, fear for either clipping their own car or clipping the parked car. So sometimes they end up, in order to avoid that, crossing over the center line to do so, creating somewhat of a hazardous situation. The other problem that I have observed lately has to do with the, is closely related to the ADA improvements that are happening up and down the street in that the, sometimes the surface has turned Buxton into a bit of a roller coaster. There are portions where the, the, the fill asphalt seems to have been done haphazardly with, and I would hope that that is something that the county will, will fix at some point. But there are also times, areas where the, I mean even when it looks finished, the, the grading of that asphalt is done in such a way that it, it creates a less than even surface for, for vehicles that are driving past. So anyway, that's all I had. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Adrian. I think we've all noticed Buxton. Anyone else on Zoom wish to address public comment? All right, how about in the council chambers? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Ritma and members of the council. My name is Jason Gates. I've been a Troutdale resident for 29 years. I'm here this evening to ask a question, provide considerations, and humbly submit a request in reference to an article in the March issue of the Troutdale Champion titled "The Status of Troutdale's Police and Fire Protection." I'll preface my comment with I am not against having an autonomous police department here in Troutdale. But as the council moves forward, I would recommend the following be included in discussions and then communicated to the Troutdale residents. I'll begin. My question is the article stated, quote, "Our citizens consistently indicated they do not believe we are getting better policing. In fact, the loss of control over our police is a significant detriment to making our, sure our police match our community values." My question is, where did the consensus for this statement come from? Was it a poll, a large pool of complaints, a committee? I mean, I just, this, I was kind of shocked to see that. And the second part of that question I have is, what are our community goals or our community values regarding our police service? And how are these values determined? And was there any public process or input into that? As the discussion or project moves forward, I would appreciate knowing the answer to those questions. Considerations, first, dissolving the contract with the county would essentially involve starting a police department from scratch. It is true that we already have a facility and that most likely patrol vehicles and some equipment would come with transferred personnel. But other capital costs would be certain and should be closely considered and monitored. Second, we would not get a cross-section of experience among transferred deputies, supervisors, executive staff, et cetera. The most likely scenario is the Deputy Sheriff's Association would first allow for voluntary transfers, starting at the top of the seniority list. And then the remaining deputies would be provided the opportunity to transfer to Troutdale or be laid off. Third, the hard fact is that Troutdale will not be able to provide the compensation benefits or career advancement opportunities comparable to the county and is probable that no one would voluntarily, voluntarily transfer. This would leave all personnel from the bottom of the seniority list having the choice of forced transfer to Troutdale or applying elsewhere. Either scenario would result in a very inexperienced workforce. Additionally, continuity of operations and emergencies and/or multi-jurisdictional issues would decline. Consistency in policy and procedure of the Troutdale PD with, with surrounding agencies would decline. Consistency in type and level of training provided to Troutdale PD officers compared to surrounding agencies could be conflicting. Increased civil liability to the city of Troutdale and operating a law enforcement department would increase. Properly equipping Troutdale PD officers would be a capital cost that is often overlooked in ramping up a, a police department. And finally, there would be loss of direct access to services from the homeless outreach and programs engagement team, the multidiscipline detectives unit, the special investigations unit, river patrol, search and rescue, and the training unit. Always Troutdale is not charged for at present. Personally, I value law enforcement agency that is customer service oriented, professional, well-trained, well-led, invested in the community, fully functioning, and who treats our citizens with dignity and respect. This has been my personal experience with the sheriff's office as a resident of Troutdale. And my request is, prior to re-establishing a police department at the great cost to our residents for less resources, I humbly ask the council to consider the points that I have made here tonight and communicate the outcome of your discussions with our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Jason, you're free to call any county and answer all of your questions.
Okay.
I'd love to hear from you again.
Anyone else wish to address?
Hello, I'm Lee Rogers, this is Michelle Pierce. We are owners of the Yield Pub. I'm sure you guys are getting tired of saying this, actually. We just wanted to come and kind of find out the status of the parking situation. We did notice that construction workers put up some signs today saying, no construction parking. But we did receive this letter in the mail stating that two-hour parking limits are going to be set and signs would be up as soon as February 10th, which is obviously kind of gone. So we're just kind of curious to where the status is on that. And then also to address the fact that the street parking was going to be two-hour parking from 8:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m., which is great, but we feel that once the apartments go in, the issue's going to become nighttime parking. And we're wondering if that can be extended to perhaps 10 o'clock. Because the way I look at it now is if somebody's allowed two hours parking, they're going to be, start parking there at 4:00 and then get through to 6:00, yeah, through overnight. So I just feel like it's going to move the problem to the nighttime rather than the daytime. And then, did you want to bring up that?
And then I had talked to somebody that sat on council before, not for Troutdale, but they had said that there was a Halsey Corridor project that was looking into the property adjacent to Target and making that a transit public parking area where they would have public parking and then do a trolley shuttle service from Wood Village, Fairview, and Troutdale with trolleys every 15 to 20 minutes from the public parking. So I was just wondering if you were familiar with that or if there's any information on that as well.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll just give a short answer to those questions, if you don't mind.
No, please.
If you'd come to my table 45 minutes ago at your wonderful restaurant, I would have answered all these for you because I love eating at your place. On the short term, these parking sign changes are the short term because we want to keep the workers from parking around your businesses. And so that's the reason why. It's a short-term solution because we know in the long term, we have to figure out what's going to happen once that building gets done and we can see the parking patterns. And so, yes, this is not a long-term solution. This is just right now to get the workers away from your businesses and, and the other, the brew pub and the game shop and things like that. So, yeah, this is just a short-term solution to help you guys out. The Halsey thing, that's a conceptual issue that would be way down the road. It's not going to be anytime soon on the Halsey project. That's been a long project and that's another long explanation, so. But yeah, those, those are things, just real short that we're working on.
What about our, what about maybe changing the, the hours of the two-hour?
Well, when, when the apartment gets full up, that may be a good idea then. Right now, the goal is to get the workers there. And, and once that gets done, then the next phase may be doing exactly what you suggest is we make it longer two-hour parking there. Or maybe 24-hour, two-hour parking only. It's whatever the businesses think is best to keep any overnight parking going on those streets. So that's, that would be our general goal is to kind of keep those streets free for business customers, not for apartment residents, the long term. So this is just short-term.
Okay, so the, the permanent two-hour parking signs aren't going to be coming up anytime soon then?
No, those will for now, to double up on the contractor signs that says come park here.
Oh, I got you.
So that's just the short-term solution to help out the businesses.
Okay.
But yeah, for the long term, that'll be a further discussion, what's best.
Do you know when the signs will go up? Is there any?
Mr. Travis?
The streets cleared from being able to go ahead and do signs west of Buxton. So we have materials for the river design on Buxton. So could be, I haven't got an update on that.
Okay, great. Because we're still, the county sign shop is our signs, don't they?
Yes.
Yeah, so we kind of work through the county sign shop. So we're making the signs.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
So very appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please come forward.
Hi, I just want to point out really quick the area I'm talking about on this map. So when I reference it, you'll understand what I'm talking about. Talking about this area right here. This area right here. Sandy Palisades. Okay.
Hello, Mayor.
Hello.
City council members, city manager, everybody. My name is Becky Hunter. I live in Sandy Palisades. I live, I've been there for, since 2017 when I bought my house. There's a canyon that runs right along the backside of my house, which is all cliff. And you look directly over the river to the other side and the other cliff. The river is rimmed with old-growth timber and it's really got a lot of thick underbrush along the whole canyon area. And across the river from my house, there are sandy beaches where lots of times the homeless people have parties and they build fires. And in my backyard, we clock winds easily 50 miles an hour all the time. And so I'm really concerned about wildfire. And I've been lucky to have Erica Palmer get a grant for the city of Troutdale. And there's an event that I hope you all, I expect you all will be there on April 5th to support it and support that little area there because we're trying to keep us from being another LA. Let me just go on here. In my backyard, I have all three components of wildfire. I have combustion across the river. I have old-growth timber that rims the whole canyon. And I have high winds all the time. And if a fire caught, if a fire took hold on the other side of the river, it would jump the river in a heartbeat with the winds and come right up that cliff and take out that whole community there. And if you see, that community is rimmed by river, creek, and fur. And the problem is that there's only one access to that area, one. One road in, one road out. So if a fire jumped across the river and came up the side of that canyon, it would cut off the backside of Sandy Palisades and most people would have nowhere to go. There'd be nowhere to get any fire engines in. There'd be nowhere to get EMS. There's no access. So there's a couple of things that Erica and I have been talking about and maybe we'll discuss at the event, is putting in an emergency, emergency gates along the Hampton Road entrance that runs perpendicular to Stark Street and parallel to Troutdale Road. Does everybody knows where I'm talking about? Yeah. So it's the mayor's property. What we're hoping to do is it won't affect his property at all. It's just taking an existing hardcore fence that's there and exchanging it for an EMS access fence. And there's three components where that can be done on, on that, all the way around Sandy, Sandy Palisades so that there's access in the event of an emergency. So that's what I'm here to, to share with you today. I, so I'm very passionate about it and I'm hoping that you all will come to the event and that you will consider looking at this very, you know, passionately as well. Because you can wipe out a whole community and we could all be dead. And I don't want to lose my house. I spend a lot of time cleaning it up and making sure that it's fire-safe and I want to keep it that way. I have eagles that fly in my backyard and I want to keep them there. That's it.
All right, thank you, Sandy. I, I should correct, that's not my property. The fields belong to a trust.
Trust, I'm sorry, I got that wrong again.
That I'm a co-trustee of. But we'll, we don't want Sandy Palisades burning down.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll do something. Anyone else wish to address the council under public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Zach, I'll let you read that.
All right, so for the consent agenda today, we have meeting minutes for February 11th, 2025, City Council Work Session. The draft is included in the packet. Does anybody have any comments or corrections?
Motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt.
All right.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Counselor Andrews.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor One.
Yes.
Mayor Ritma.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Davidson.
Yes.
Counselor Leeny.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number four. 4.1 is a presentation from Multimodal County on the 257th Project Timeline.
All right. Push. Okay, it was already on. Hi, thank you so much. I'm Sarah Hurwitz. I'm the Public Information Officer for Transportation. Nice to see some familiar faces and some new faces on the council. We have been here twice already for the Southwest 257th Safety Improvements Project. And we are heading into construction this week and that's why we're here. So we wanted to provide some updates for you. And I'm joined by the lovely project manager, Stephen McWilliams, who will take it over and kind of run through the traffic impacts and then I can talk about public outreach.
Good evening, Mayor Ritma and council members. We're here to talk about 257th Avenue Corridor Safety Improvements. Possibly to the next slide. So a little, I want to kind of give a little bit of background before we jump right into what, what we'd see to expect during construction. So the project overview, this is a multimodal safety improvement project from, the primary, primary extents are from Sturgis in the north to Stark Street, both sides, and along with some electrical upgrades from Sturgis to Historic Columbia River Highway. The average daily traffic is 18,000 vehicles per day, 60% cars, 40% trucks and buses, is a very occupied street. And so this is something that we, you know, kept in mind in design and as well moving that into construction to keep that traffic moving through an important corridor in Troutdale. A little bit of background, the cost, approximate, approximately $800, $8 million for the design and construction cost for this. Received $45,000 in grant funds for green bike boxes as well as $600,000 from Mid-County Lighting District to install all-new aluminum DAVAPOL lighting. Next, please. This is a little bit of a high-level overview of what kind of improvements we'll be including in this project. On that left box, you'll see this is kind of the north extent of the project, starting up there on Sturgis Drive. We'll be doing some signal improvements, ADA improvements on those signalized intersections. Going down along there, we'll be improving bus stops for, for ADA access. Where at Cherry Park, we'll be improving the bus stops. We'll be improving the signals and all ADA on that, on that route too. At 17th Way there, near the high school, we're installing enhanced pedestrian crossing, also sometimes known as a hawk signal, which has a, it's a red beacon. So it's not your average amber light beacon. And then we're also doing some signal improvements on Hensley. Also installing our second enhanced pedestrian crossing at that 28th Street intersection, the three-way. And as well, all along the corridor, we'll be doing rehabilitation of the pavement, a combination of slurry seal and grind and overlay to rehabilitate the road for a good 15, 20 years. Next, please.
All right.
And so just as kind of a little example of what kind of improvements you'll see out there, rate our feedback signage, we're including two of those on this project, bike boxes at Sturgis, and kind of example what those enhanced pedestrian crossings will look like as well as pedestrian push buttons, all the signalized intersection for ADA access. Pass it over to Sarah.
Yeah, so we are going to be keeping the community informed throughout construction. We already did that in the earlier phases of this project. We've already sent more than 3,000 postcards to residents within a fourth of a mile of the project area. So folks should be aware that construction is coming. We also do, if you've driven on 257th, I'm sure you've seen that message board that's already out there that's telling folks that construction is coming as well. I also sent out a press release today. Did anybody in this room get that? Yes, we're okay. So we need to change that and make sure the council gets that. I'll put all of y'all on my press release list moving forward. But we did send out a press release today about traffic impacts that start on Thursday and Friday of this week, which we expect to be minimal. It'll be lane shift, so you know what? I'm going to let the, the engineer explain what a lane shift is really quick.
Well, yeah, well, some lane shifting. Actually, how about when we get to that slide?
Okay, okay. Okay, well, anyway. Minimal traffic impact this week, but we will be, you know, ramping up and we expect there will be single lane closures at some point, which he'll get to. We also do have the contractor, which this is not, in my experience, not standard. The contractor has offered to also make their own flyer and give out to residents as well, which I think is pretty neat. So we're kind of hitting it from two different sides and making sure that the community is aware. And folks can also sign up for regular updates. That's the website where you can do that. Next slide. Another really important stakeholder is Reynolds High School and, and the school district there. We've already had meetings with the principal, the transportation director in the fall. So months ahead of actual construction work, we wanted to make sure that we gave them what they needed information-wise and asked kind of what updates they would actually want. We also created a communications kit. So you see on the right of your screen, this was a graphic that we actually made for the school district so that they could put out on their own social media channels and print it and provide it to other families. They have their own translation services within their school. So they, so that they would take the language that we provided and translate it into Spanish and a couple of other languages. So we're expecting to have frequent communication throughout the project specifically with the school. And I'll toss it back to you.
Thank you.
Next slide. Next slide.
Okay, so in general, I'll discuss here kind of the project schedule and phasing we expect on this project. The duration, we're looking at starting pretty much now, and then construction will last, it'll ramp up and then, but activities will happen till the end of 2025, so the next nine months, we'll be seeing crews working out there. Phase one, after discussions with our contractor, we'll be starting on the west side of 257th, starting between Sturgis and Stark Street. The primary improvements that we'll be working on is the sidewalk, bus stop improvements, the lighting, the light pole bases and poles, working on the signal poles at some of the signalized intersections, pedestrian poles anyway, as well as some pavement repair, like some of the lanes on that side of the street as well. Then after kind of that whole west side is mostly complete, we'll hop over to the east side where we're doing the same type of improvements as before, and also grinding and paving the east side lanes after all the concrete work and flat work is finished up, as well as the electrical work and utility relocations and things of that sort. After that, it's kind of, just hops over to the center lane, we'll be doing concrete islands for the pedestrian hybrid beacons. And so we'll be kind of just working on the center lane for that, south of Sturgis. But north of Sturgis, that's when they move into installing lighting on the west side of, of 257th. And that requires shooting a new conduit, as well as all light new pole, new light pole bases and aluminum davenport poles for the lighting. And then, yeah, that's, that would be phase four, the improvements west side serves the HCRH, so that's kind of the final phase of the project. Majority of the, according to the schedule, the majority of the improvements will be complete end of, end of summer, but there's a really long lead time for some of those signal poles, we're looking at like 40 weeks, so they're just kind of ordering those now and we'll have everything kind of wrapped up, but they won't really be operational for pedestrians to cross them November, December of 2025. Next slide, please. So here's kind of a list of some items of what to expect during construction. 257th will remain open to traffic at all hours and all times, of course, unless under flag conditions where there will be some stopping motions and flagging to primarily go through intersections. Pedestrian access maintained while minimizing detours, we'll be installing pedestrian detours on this project. In order to get the work done, there will have to be some closures, but we'll include additional signage for that while minimizing those detours. Typical working hours are 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Some work activities may occur at night and weekends to accommodate schedule and traffic, especially those high-impact items like paving. There is some consideration of maybe having that as, as a nighttime thing, depending on how things work out. During all working hours, there should be an expectation of lane shifting and accommodate work zones. I'll kind of show you what that might look like in different conditions. We include peak time restrictions as well. We took, we looked at the traffic data and, and saw peak times between 7:00 and 9:00 and 3:00 to 5:00. This includes that work traffic going out and in. And so we're kind of limiting a little bit of traffic control that can be done during those times to accommodate as, as much traffic as possible. However, there, we can't limit, limit them to 9:00 to 3:00 PM, but we can limit the amount of lanes that can be used. Next slide, please. So the next three slides are going to be some sample anticipated traffic control. There will be a lot that you see out there that'll, that'll change and I can't cover it all just this evening, but in general, this is kind of the changes we might see during, during construction. So during peak hour or non-peak hour, we'll utilize the median lane to shift traffic over so that they have a, a work zone to demo sidewalk, have the crews safe to install all that, all that concrete flat work or any type of electrical work in those areas. These are for areas that are not outside of signalized intersections. We're going to maintain during normal working conditions, left turn movements, the signal should operate as, as normal, but during those longer stretches where they're working on the sidewalk, expect lane shifting and utilizing median lanes where possible. Next slide, please. This is kind of an example of like sidewalk during non-peak hours, so you know, when, when we have a little bit less traffic out there, we have options that we may slim down to just utilizing one lane. Now, this is, this is shown through like an intersection, for example, but this could be on, on longer stretches as well, where it may just be, just taking a lane and shifting traffic over to an interior lane or an exterior lane, depending on working on the center or working on the sidewalk. Next slide, please. It's kind of a little example of phase three, working on some median improvements. Work going on in the center, whether that's street rehabilitation, paving, grinding, or, or concrete islands, there will be times that accommodate that zone, which will need ample room for crews and trucks to work, which will have to split traffic kind of in just as one lane going through that area, and then they'll be opened up back to two lanes after that work zone. Next, please. So right now, we just, you may have questions, we're just kind of open enough for any questions you may have during this phase of construction.
You're done?
Yes. Thank you.
Well, I, I wondered if you, I think we're all, I speak for myself, but I think all citizens are concerned about Buxton being such a mess. That's a county project also, and at the same time, you're starting on 257th. Those are our main north-south traffic areas. I'll just say, congratulations on getting the Stark Street Bridge done. For some of us, like me, who live in the southern part of the city, I can duck over the river and up to Stark Street and to other places in Troutdale, but Buxton has been just a mess, and I'm sorry to ask, it's probably not something you can address, if you don't know anything about it, but we wondered if your contractor is the same one you're using on Buxton. Do you happen to know?
Yes. So that was a concern of us when the ADA project started up, when you 257th was coming, and then Stark Street happens. And so that was a major concern for us, that that would happen all at the same time, we're, we're considering a bunch of options. One thing on the ADA project, I don't have tons of information on it, but I know that they're wrapping up that part of Buxton fairly soon.
Yeah, okay.
And they'll be jumping into other parts of the East County for other product, other ramps to reconstruct.
When you said yes, is it the same, it's the same contractor doing it?
It is not the same contractor.
All right.
And I'd like to mention too, that our, our prime contractor is Interlock Inc., and they're out of Fairview, so they're a local construction firm.
Okay.
I also do sit in those, the ADA work project meetings, and they are expecting to wrap up by the end of March. That's their targeted, so hopefully.
Well, hooray. Anyway, if I jumped in, Zach, please.
Thank you, Ms. Mar. Yeah, I just noticed, based on the transportation plan and the research that was done by the county before, I think the intersection at 26th was calculated to be kind of a more problematic one with pedestrian crossing. I noticed you guys had the more detailed pedestrian crossing put down at 28th, so was the decision behind that move one that the, you know, the, I know some of the residents had a concern about using the center lane for turning? And if that wasn't the issue, then I'm just curious as to the thinking behind that.
Sure, I can address that. That is 24, or 26, apologize, is a four-way intersection, 28th is a three-way intersection. Now, it is, is not recommended to put in enhanced pedestrian crossing where that's only seen in one direction on a four-way intersection, and which, if we went the route at 26, that would require pretty much four signals on each intersection, which would make it just a signalized intersection, which didn't really pass the, the warrants when it came to moving traffic through the area. We, we look at those, where to put signals as like moving traffic pedestrians through, and they're really, signals are helpful where you have a lot of traffic moving in both directions. So that's the, that's the reason behind that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council? Glenn?
Yeah, I know, I, I know the rub for us was that they, you guys were going to shrink down freight, freight lanes, and I'm just wondering, has that ever been done anywhere? Is there an example of that being done in the county, anywhere else?
Nothing, nothing I'm aware of in the county, no. We just, it's just kind of working out the national standards for the, a street such as 257th, the amount of traffic that can go through and what the traffic sees, what, what kind of lanes are available based on just national standards. Not even the county that I'm aware of.
So we're, we're the big experiment then. So I guess my question is, what if, what if it doesn't work out? What's going to happen if we start seeing an uptick in accidents or, you know, God forbid fatalities, you know, with, you know, you're, you're mixing freight routes and 40% of that traffic is, is trucks. And it's now kind of the de facto main way to get up to Highway 26, so, and then you're mixing that with bikes. So it's a big concern for me. In fact, a previous council led by Mayor Lauer wrote a letter to Senator Chris Gorsick. Were you guys aware of that, that we were kind of blocked out, this from happening? And when I was camp, we had an election year, I was campaigning, and it was a big concern from our public, that they're aware of it. We put, Ray put it out in The Champion, and that was one of the biggest concerns that I heard when I was campaigning, so. What, what happened with the letter, if you could fill us in? Did anything happen?
I think there was kind of a, a meeting higher up with, with Senator Gorsick, and they, I think it was just kind of support of using, using that as a method to reduce speeds along the corridor, in, in conjunction with other methods we were trying to implement to reduce speeds, and, and reduction of speeds will reduce fatalities and major injuries, any sort of vehicular accident, is the kind of justification for that. So I, I wasn't in that meeting, but I, I assume they were in support of that.
Anyone else? Yes.
I was in a couple of your meetings as one of the committee members that you presented to, and I know that we spoke very highly against moving the lanes and making one lane smaller. We discussed that in late. We also felt like we weren't heard. Obviously, you're doing it anyway, so I'm really concerned about when we have voiced our opinion, the citizens have voiced their opinions, and it's like we don't matter. The other thing is, you talk about bike lanes, but you don't fix the bike lanes the way they are now. They're all dirty, there's nobody that cleans them, there's not a lot of bikes that go on them. I have friends that, that do bike quite a bit, they avoid 257th altogether because it's never cleaned, it's always dirty. And so what is the solution to that once you're done with your project?
I don't have like an answer for that just today, but I can see what you mean by, why give extra separation between bikes and vehicles if half the bike lane is, is unusable? I think that's, that's a major concern. I think that's a, a question of allocating like budget to our maintenance department to sweep more often, especially arterial lanes. I think that is something that, that has been discussed as something that we want to improve in the future. Once again, not part of those, just kind of hearing around.
I know, I know a little bit. Okay, so what I, what I understand is that in COVID, our transportation director has mentioned this to me a couple of times, and so have our road maintenance crews, that in COVID, some of the maintenance, like what you're talking about, like sweeping vegetation and things that are alongside the road, kind of fell to the wayside, and we acknowledge that and own that. And I think some of it did have to do with funding and also staffing shortages, so an inability to get to every place that we needed to get to. My understanding is that moving forward, obviously, like Stephen said, that's a goal and that we're trying to build back up, but there's kind of like a backlog that we're trying to, to work through. So hopefully that gives a little bit of context, but.
Okay, but my concern is that our state is going under a budget cut in many areas, especially transportation and projects, that I just don't think it, I mean, if it happens, wonderful and great, but I don't see that anybody's going to come out here extra special to make sure that they're, they're done, they haven't yet. I don't see that that improving would be great, but that is a concern. And then just the, again.
Can I, can I add something to that? We are calling on the Oregon Legislature to help fund our roads, so I would contact folks in Salem as well and let them know that this is a huge priority. We had a press opportunity for reporters to come out on one of our roads in Corbett about a month ago, specifically talking about the issue of the lack of funding, and that the county needs more of it, the state needs more of it. So we, we recognize that there is, there's a funding gap and there's a, a need in many areas across our county and our state, but we don't have, we don't have the money to, to hit all of the roads, so. One time Salem.
Well, I have.
Sorry.
And, but, I have, but I'm, I'm just concerned that, I appreciate the work you guys have done, I know that a lot of decisions are made above your heads, but I am concerned that we're not being listened to as a city, and our citizens aren't being listened to, and our council's not being listened to, and so it's frustrating. And so I appreciate you coming and listening, so I really appreciate you at the committee as well. I'm just concerned what it's going to look like in the future.
Yeah, thanks so much for that feedback. What I will say about that is we did do a very robust public outreach process and made sure to include many community members in Troutdale. We had more than 200 responses to our survey, we had walking tours that were both bilingual, we brought people out who are immediately affected and live along that corridor, so I completely hear your concerns, but I also do want to communicate that we were very thoughtful and intentional about our public outreach process to make sure that it was as diverse as possible and that it represented this community.
I'm going to amplify what Carol said and be less nice than she was, just a little bit, I need to be direct. I think that not budgeting for keeping our roads clean is disrespectful to us. I used to bike a lot on 257th and it never gets cleaned, and I can't bike on it now, there's rocks all over the side, so you can create a bike lane that is buffered and is supposed to be nice to bikes, but when people can't ride there because it's dangerous on the rocks, if you have a big gigantic mountain bike, maybe your tires can handle, but a road bike, you're going to, you're, it's going to be squirrely. The road will look nice from Stark to Sturgis to begin with, but look at 238th, now it's redone and now it's all overgrown. And so part of, I think, what people do to be proud of their community is when you drive down the road, your road is nice, it's well-maintained, the weeds are taken care of, but none of that gets done. And so you can, you know, you can fix something, you can make it look nice, but then if you never take care of it and you let it go to disrepair, disrepair, that's where we feel like we don't matter. And you can say we don't have money for it, but that's just poor planning, and that, to me, on that part, because maintenance of our roads, maintenance of our sidewalks, it should be part of, should be part of the project, and it should be thought out before we take on these things where we narrow lanes, we create bike lanes, that's great, we create crossings that are supposed to be safer for people, that's great, but what happens when we go to that, go to that crossing and it's, it's dirty, there is gravel all over it, and someone on a wheelchair gets stuck in that, you know? It's, it's harder for them to get their, maybe legs to get going or whatever. I, I think that, to me, that's very poor planning, and I realize you guys are here, so like, you're the only person I can talk to to say that, so I'm not saying that it's your fault for doing that, but I really hope that you take that message back, that when they, roads become, and everything becomes overgrown, nobody sees what the work was done at all. And that's the most disappointing part to this, is that, and that's where we get felt like we get left out, that's a big rhetoric around here. You guys didn't listen and to maybe the biggest issues that we had, and again, that maybe makes us all feel we weren't heard. And so I really hope that in the future, we can have better forethought of, of these projects. So. So, and I hear what you say, there's no budget for it, but I have a hard time believing that. I think our budget is poorly allocated to different areas that we.
Again, I'm not the expert, so like you'd have to talk to our road maintenance leads to really understand that. And we're happy to connect you with those folks.
Like we always do, coming, kind of coming back from having a presentation is kind of a debrief of what we heard. You know, and so we'll be doing that like we always do. Definitely talking about maintenance is a primary concern.
Okay, I appreciate that. I also want to just, the Corbett Road was brought to the attention by many people that live on that road complaining that it was unable to be driven. It was, a school bus was not able to drive down that road. The county would have never done anything about it unless many people went to the news to do, to get attention brought to that. And that's the only reason that it got fixed. So, you know, we can go around and around. I'm not going to, not going to do that.
Thank you for your feedback. All again, let our road maintenance crews know.
So, thank you.
Anyone else on council? I'll, if not, I'll open it to public comment. As is our tradition here in Troutdale. I'll start with Zoom. Anyone on Zoom want to address this issue? The 257th project with the county?
Mayor Ripmappolo, Cox, Troutdale.
All right, Paul.
Thank you, Dave. This might be a different department than you guys, but I wondered about possibility of left turn flashing arrows. The intersections that don't have them, possibly 16th and Sturgis. I know, I know there is one at Hensley already. Another thing is, you two have heard this from me personally before, but I think the enhanced crossing at 17th Way is completely ridiculous. Between two, you know, signalized intersections. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Did you have any comment on the?
Yeah, I can, I can comment on flashing arrows. We typically contract with City Aggression to maintain our signals and they have a signal team that can kind of look into what kind of movements are, that make the intersection the safest, most efficient. I know there's been issues with southbound Stark Street without enough, a lot of backup with people taking left onto Stark Street, heading southbound 257th. This is something we brought up with our signal crews. I think the technology that there is out there, there was kind of an answer. There's nothing we can really do, unfortunately. But as far as those other left turn flashing arrows, like on the 16th, heading southbound on Stark Street, this is kind of a, another thing that's, it could be not necessarily part of this project, but a future conversation, because that could be a maintenance item where we look into that further and adjust those timings or left turn arrows. Regarding the 17th, yeah, I, I think I remember you mentioned that before. We looked into that and it was a main concern with being next to a school that, you know, a lot of students kind of cross haphazardly in some of those areas and we want to offer an opportunity for students to have, who don't like to go all the way to an intersection to cross, maybe just try to risk it to go across. This has an opportunity to have a safe crossing. Anytime for students heading north from Stark Street, that this is an area, a safe area to cross if they miss it at Hensley.
All right, anyone else on Zoom wish to address this? How about in the chambers here? Yes.
Hello, my name is Al Pompeo and she's my sister. She speaks better English than me. When we are young, my mom sent to learn English. My sister speaks very good English. She's a teacher. I am very good in video games. Anyway, the 257, I love driving the 257. I live on Gresham and I work in Troutdale. I drive two times a day at least the 257. And I drive in Division Two when it's more wide for the bicycle and narrow for the cars. When I see improvements, I say, oh, nice, they go to do improvements for the 257. But when I see they go to narrow the car lines and widen the bicycle and reduce the speed, I know for 50 years, we already know, 40 miles per hour is very efficient for the gas. That means we go to down 10 miles for more pollution. One of the problems in the world is the pollution. And we go to reduce the speed for more traffic stops. My suggestion, I know the city council cannot take any decision. What you can share with the citizens and put in the website for the city, what is the opinion for the citizen? Do narrow the lines and widen the bicycles in the 257 and spend $8 million in that project. And the citizens can vote. They can say they like or not they like. And with that information, you can come back to the Monoma County and they figure out how they do. That is my suggestion for you guys. Put a survey on the website. What do citizens think about this project? What do you do differently like they present? They present nice, but they don't say they go to narrow the lines bigger for the bicycles, reduce the speed 10 miles and have more pollution. You guys thinking in it? Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the council chambers? Any?
Good evening, Mayor Ripmappo and councillors. First off, I want to thank the county for the work that they did on the Stark Street Bridge. That's a real help already and a lot of people are using it and I think it's helping ease the Columbia River Highway and traffic through Troutdale. So thank you for doing that. On this project, just a couple of things. When 238th got done, the county came and said, hey, we're going to do, we're going to fix 257th because we know that's going to be a major corridor and it needs some work. And I just don't know that this is what anybody had in mind at that time. Because if this is where it was going, I would have been like, don't do 238. Because I'm just, I'm just reiterating some things that I've said before. You know, when you look at this, I walked it with some other people. Nobody ever said anything about shrinking the lanes. Or I probably would have flipped over right there in the street. And we had truckers come in and testify and say that they would not be in the right lane if there's a bike there. They would go to the left lane because they said that if a bike fell over, he would go right underneath the trailer and be killed instantly. And, and so when you got a smaller lane, I just don't know how that works. And then looking at things like the crossing between Hensley and Cherry Park. When that thing gets lit, I would imagine that people are going to stop and that's going to put traffic into the intersection at Cherry Park and 257th. And then you're going to have basic gridlock there. Because that traffic's not going to move going south or north until, or going south until that is clear, right? And so if the light changes, nobody can move. I think that could be a problem. But, you know, we're looking at this and I bring up the thing, you know, we talked about the, and I know it's not you guys, but the maintenance issue. And doing this and not having a maintenance plan, I think is a little short sighted. It's practically an act of Congress to get a possible filled on that road. And you see people going down there now and they're going like this and, you know, trying to dodge things. And I think we have to be better planners than that. I don't know that 15-year pavement, that surprises me with 17,000 cars a day on it, that it's going to last that long. I mean, maybe it will, but that seems like a long time. And, you know, when we were talking about this before, one of the case studies that was used was Albany, New York. Right? That was one of them that was discussed, was something in Albany, New York. And there was also some stuff in California, like I believe Santa Monica, East LA, something like that. But those were some of the other ones that were used. And when you, when we look at this, it's like, and I think, you know, Councillor White was right when he said, well, it's kind of like we're going to be the trial one for this. And we're talking about safety improvements, but I'm a little confused because we're putting in a bike lane and we're doing safety improvements on a freight corridor. And so are we worried about getting the traffic and the freight up the hill? Or we, are we worried about both? And how are we going to accomplish both? I don't know what the answers are, but at the end of the day, I'm just frustrated because we did walks, you got, people came, presented to meetings. The council heard about it, the Planning Commission heard about it. I think Citizens Advisory heard about it. And we've done all this outreach and it's even gone to regional transportation meetings where Troutdale representatives have brought it up. And our state representative brought it up. And at the end of the day, what I'm hearing is the county's just basically said, hey, it's our road. We're going forward. And I'm just saying, that's frustrating. As a citizen, as a taxpayer, it's just, it's frustrating. So thank you for lighting the brain.
Okay, well, first off, thank you for sharing your concerns. Really appreciate it. I think you mentioned, both of you mentioned this concern about feeling like you're forgotten in East County. And I just want to be very clear that the county values East County residents. We care about the roads out here. So, and I don't want you to feel that you are not heard. Because we do care about the problems and believe me, we hear about them and know that it's a continual issue that we need to address. So I think if you take away anything from, from the two of us who are not leadership, right? The project team here, that, that the county really wants to make sure that East County is heard. So take, take that. You also mentioned something about the walking tours and, you know, the fact that the lanes were not mentioned at all. And I, I'm going to probably toss a little bit to Stephen on this. But what we did hear from, and these were community members who live in this neighborhood. So it's always hard to include everybody, right? So that's also what's challenging about this, is that we did the best we could to represent this area as best as possible. Clearly, there's some folks who maybe not, maybe, might not have gotten the invite. But we heard from a lot of the folks that use 257th that they did want to make it safer and that the feeling of that is slowing traffic. So the thing, that is the feedback that we got in our surveys in the walking tours. So you're right, that the lane piece might not have been actually mentioned specifically. But that is an aspect of slowing traffic down. And so I'm just going to leave it there.
I just kind of want to just kind of read you a little bit on that. We're not, I heard a couple of times tonight that we're not creating a bike lane. There's a bike lane already there. The goal is just to make the separation between traffic and the bike just not safe, it's just safer. And so that's kind of, we heard the concern of high speeds, uncomfortable. And kind of a solution we brought is just something like that where we can reallocate some of the space, make it safe. We still want the same amount of traffic to come down and just bring down the speeds a little lower by implementing some of these things. It doesn't fix anything and it is difficult question to answer. There's a lot of balancing work between traffic, freight, walking, biking, rolling, anything. So. Yeah, let's just kind of address some of that.
Yeah, so, I mean, it is a balance between multiple groups that are using this. We know it's a freight corridor. We know that that's, and it's very important that the city values that, right? We did brief the Oregon Trucking Association. Jana, I'm forgetting her last name. She's the director. And she was completely like on board. And that was one of the main groups that we wanted to make sure that we got kind of that vote of confidence about the lane change.
All right, anyone else in the chamber wish to address us on this issue? Well, sorry you're not getting songs of praise. The council did make it very clear, we didn't, when the project was first proposed, we didn't favor it. And the concerns raised by the citizens here are exactly the things we brought up. If, if the truckers favored this, we didn't hear about it. At least I didn't. I don't recall anyone mentioning it. But it's our road. Excuse me, it's in our city. It's your road. But we, that's why we're expressing some disappointment that we think you didn't really listen. But I know you're doing the best you can. Thank you again for the Stark Street Bridge. And get that.
We'll keep shipping away.
Yeah, get that Buxton job done ASAP. Anyone else?
I just want to make a prediction. I believe when that road is finished, that the off-ramp on Exit 17 won't be long enough. I think you're going to have a backup into the emergency lane.
From, just, just all the way back from all the way to the highway.
Frontage Road and then making the turn heading up to, towards Sturgis. I think you're going to, there's already so much traffic on that road and to slow it down and shrink those lanes and widen the bike lane. My prediction is that you're going to have to build a much larger off-ramp at Exit 17, which would be unfortunate. I hope I'm wrong. And I'm sorry, I know you guys are the messengers and you don't have a lot to say. You're not supposed to attack the messenger, but, you know, it was pretty frustrating to not even hear back from the county when the mayor and the entire council sent a letter to the Vice Chair of Transportation, Chris Korsak. We didn't get any feedback on that. So if nothing else, if you could just send that back and.
I think we learned from something like that.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to follow up with our leadership just to figure out exactly what happened there and get back to you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 4.2, which is introducing the new council to waste management.
Good evening, Mayor Ripmappo and City Councilor members. My name is Ryan Largura. I'm the environmental specialist here in the city. So nice to meet the new councillors. I thought we would kind of have this opportunity tonight to just give a very high level overview of the recycling and solid waste program here in the city. So I'd give you a little bit of the background of what's causing the program to work in a way. And then a little bit of a preview of this coming year's events, because we have a bit of, a lot of things going on this year in this world of recycling and solid waste. So as I mentioned, here's the brief, very brief overview. We're going to cover who's our regulatory authority on our recycling and solid waste program. Who is our franchise hauler sitting next to me? And how do service rates work a little bit? So the regulatory and guidance. So we are regulated by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and. Quality, and primarily, two big documents, also under Metro, we have first, under the DEQ, the 2050 Vision and Action Framework for Materials Management in Oregon, and 2030 Regional Waste Plan, Metro has put together. Those are our two big documents that kind of oversee the work in solid waste and recycling, and primarily for code, at the state level, is the Opportunity Recycle Act. That's the big one that was passed in the early 80s. Under Metro's codes, they have regional service standards, business recycling requirement, business food waste requirement, and then all of that's kind of wrapped together when we do our annual waste reduction program reporting for all of the work that's being done during the year. So I just want to give you a very broad, very broad overview of kind of what's, what's regulating this. Moving on to our exclusive franchise agreement with waste management, we updated that agreement last year, and that occurs typically on an eight-year cycle, and in the middle of that eight-year cycle, we do a kind of a midterm review for the city council to kind of take a look at what the work is that waste management's been doing, and have any feedback at that point as well. New to our franchise agreement this coming term is going to be, we're going to have quarterly customer reports. We did not have any data in the past on, let's say, call volume at a state level that waste management receives, but also, we are going to now have quarterly reporting for Troutdale complaints. So residents who call into the waste management phone number and, you know, voice whatever concern or complaint they may have, will be able to see some of that data now. So, that's really helpful going forward when we do assessments on the work that waste management is doing in the city. We're also adding transfer station events, we had our first one officially back in November under the new franchise agreement, so that's where we have drop-off events of bulky waste items at the Troutdale Transfer Station, which is normally not open to the public. So that was kind of a change, that at least we get a couple of times a year to have that open to the public for bulky waste, rather than driving perhaps to Sandy for the Clackamas Transfer Station, or to Metro South or Metro Central, which is a bit of a hike for our residents. Another item that we added this year is annual spill reports. So, I had several calls last year where, you know, the residents would call up, hey, there's a truck spilling, you know, oil down the street, have you heard? No, I haven't heard. And so, you know, this will help waste management kind of, they have some new protocols, I believe, built in to how to address these kind of spills when they're happening on a route truck, and also, we'll be able to get, again, more feedback of, how many times is this really happening a year? How big of a problem is it, you know? And get some actual numbers associated with that, rather than a one-off when a resident might call myself. Moving on to our service rates, so we typically do a service rate review every year, it's typically prompted by waste management, they're allowed under the franchise agreement to operate within a profit range of 8% to 12%. So, let's say if it's within that 8% to 12% and waste management comes to me and says, hey Ryan, we're going to do a service rate review, great, we can do that. I bring it before city council as a resolution, you may look at it, but we are under no obligation to, you know, adjust our rates based, if they're falling in between the 8% to 12% profit range. Last year, they fell outside of that range, however, they didn't elect to come before us and do a rate review. The last one was conducted in 2023, mainly because we were undergoing the franchise agreement update, it was just not great timing. However, what makes pressure on rates? Well, the two biggest kind of levers that I see typically are the Metro Regional System Fee, that they go through their cycle every year of, you know, their budget and rate review, and, and they update that regional system fee, and that's kind of a trickle-down effect that then comes to our transfer stations, private transfer stations, that then have tipping fee increases to help offset that regional system fee that Metro will be, you know, charging on transfer stations. So, it goes from a disposal rate kind of fee to a collection fee in terms of our rates. So that's typically one pressure that causes our rates to be increased. And then the other is obviously labor and transportation costs, you know, we're talking contracts, we're talking, you know, just general cost increases of fuel, whatever MIP that leads to those costs, but those are a big issue in terms of disposal and even collection. So, you know, you kind of get two sides there. So those are kind of issues, and just to forewarn, we're probably going to have a rate review this year, because like I said, we fell below the 8% to 12% operating range last year, and as far as I know, Metro is, they, they're kind of right-sizing their cost of service at their own transfer stations, which has caused them to be doing year-over-year Metro Regional System Fee increases. So, they're going through their budget process right now, and I'm guessing they're going to have another increase. So, again, that's going to put more pressure on our rates as well. So, you'll be seeing us, I'm sure, later in the spring for a rate review. And so, what, what also can lead to different rate reviews or increased costs is potential new services, and we have brought this before the council in the past, and that's potentially upgrading our roll carts to a self-locking mechanism cart. I'm not going to get into it now, because, you know, that'll be something probably we'll bring up during the rate review, but just know that that's one item of service change we might be looking at, and also, I've heard some residents voiced an interest in having a residential food waste collection. We currently have the business, the commercial food waste requirement that Metro has for the region, but residential food waste is optional. However, like I said, I did hear back, some feedback lately that there might be some interest in that on residential side, but it'll be, something we'll be bringing before you for any rate review topics. That's really all I had for you tonight. This is my colleague, Dave Huber, I work with him, and he is going to talk a little bit more about maybe some of our upcoming events this year. I didn't mention, but we also have the Plastic Pollution Recycling Modernization Act going into effect July 1st. Now, that's a statewide change, we don't, we still don't know exactly what that means for our service in recycling, primarily, it's going to affect recycling, but that's just another thing off in the distance coming. But like I said, we have rates coming, we also have another Troutdale Transfer Station event coming up in April, and, and Dave is going to speak to you a little bit about our textile pilot, because that was another thing that we added to our franchise agreement, is the ability to have pilots programmed. So, if there's some new service that, hey, maybe we should try this out, can we do this? Waste Management will tell us, yeah, sure, let's do this, here's what the potential cost may be, you know, whatever it might be. In this instance, we were able to have a textile recycling curbside recycling reuse kind of collection going to be happening at least four times in the coming year, and it's one of its, first of its kind, I believe, for waste management nationwide. So it's kind of an exciting thing, they're going to be partnering with Goodwill to kind of help collect some of that clothes. Goodwill, I won't take all day's thunder, so I should stop talking right now. So I'll pass it along to Dave, thank you. If you have any questions, though, I can answer it after Dave's presentation or speaking.
Thank you, Ryan, and I won't take too long. Good evening, Mayor Rittner, city councilors and city staff. Good seeing familiar faces and some new faces this evening as well. So, yeah, I have some exciting news, as Ryan, you know, indicated, we are going to be doing a pilot program here in the city of Troutdale. This, as Ryan mentioned, this is something that no other city has done here in the state of Oregon, so this is new for us, it's, it's going to be a pilot program that's no cost to our customers here in the city of Troutdale as well. So, WM and Goodwill are making it easy to recycle old textiles with our, it's called, we're calling it our WM Return Program, return is an acronym for recovering textiles right now. This is going to be for a limited time, free textile collection. So what, what do you do? You simply bag up your clothing, your linens, old towels, even if they're torn or stained, and you set them out on designated textile collection days next to your curbside carts. So, I brought my prop, and I won't share with you the textiles that are in here that I found in my house, but, but this is basically what we're looking, you know, offering the customers here in Troutdale to put these bags out on designated days for collection, place bags that are no larger than 35 gallons at the curb, this is a 30-gallon bag, and then securely close, because we do want to try to keep this, well, we want to keep this material dry, and so there's no moisture in it, clearly labeled textiles, and residents may place up to 10 of these bags out per collection. So the first collection date is going to be next month, it's scheduled on Thursday, April 24th, which is everybody's, you know, everybody's service day in Troutdale is on Thursday, and then we will pick it up, and then we, you know, we'll, we'll take care of it. Like Brian mentioned, we're going to work with Goodwill, take it to the Goodwill facility where, you know, they will sort through it, reuse the materials that can be reused, and then the, the rest of the material, we will handle, take it to a recycling facility where these fabrics can be recycled. So, exciting. And just really quick, you know, each year, their average American throws away roughly 80 pounds of textiles, worn-out clothes and linens. This results in 17 million tons of textiles headed to the landfill. So, instead of throwing them away, you know, this is, this is a great opportunity for us to, you know, recycle it. So, as all of you know, waste management, we are in the collection business and the landfill business, but what's, what's important to us is that we have set bold and sustainable ambition, ambitions where material is repurposed, energy is renewable, and communities end up thriving with that. So, this is that opportunity. We have started to put messaging out in customer invoices, so you, if you look at your invoices here in March, there was some messaging on the textile program. We'll be sending out postcards the first part of April, and we'll probably do some social media in collaboration with the city if we can to get the word out. So, the more bags, the better on April 24th, which happens to be Earth Month, so, good timing.
I'm just going to add a little bit more on the why kind of, why would we want to take it, you know, to Goodwill, have them pick it over, and then have waste management kind of recycle it, instead of maybe leaving it all with Goodwill? And the point is, we don't always know what is happening with clothing that Goodwill may not be using for resale in their stores, and so this kind of helps close some of that gap by having waste management haul this material to their facility, that's rather new, I believe, in, in South Carolina, actually. And what it is, is a fiber-to-fiber, so it's creating, you know, taking these clothing materials that no one else can use, and reusing, repurposing them into mechanically recycling them into another fiber, so that it can be reused as clothing or whatever the material may be used for. So it's still a usable commodity and not just potentially going to a landfill, that's the big deal on why we're trying to do this pilot program, to see, is that something that can be done? What is the cost of hauling something across country versus, you know, maybe sending to a landfill? Is there, you know, I don't know, there's a lot of questions hopefully we can answer, I can't promise we will, but that's why we do a pilot, just see, see what it is. So, anyways, with that, I don't have any more to say, but if you have any questions, I think I'll start.
All right. Questions from the council?
How long does the pilot last?
It's, it's going to last for a year. We're going to do four pickups, and we, right now, we have the April 24th day scheduled, the next one will be June 26th, and then we're looking at doing one in September, and then one in January 2026. And we were, we tried to be strategic about this, you know, for example, at the end of June, you know, kids are out of school, so, you know, there's probably some change in clothing there that might need to be, you know, opportunity to be recycled. Same with September, back to school, and then January, we all get those, you know, usually little new clothing at the end of the year during the holidays, so, so those, those are the four dates that we're looking at right now.
Sounds like a cool program.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're excited about it, and I hope, I think all the other cities that we service here in the state of Oregon are going to be envious of Troutdale, so.
That was the goal.
Yeah.
They already are, sir.
And they already are, yeah.
Dave, I just wanted to thank you for adding the spring cleanup and fall cleanup events to do the apartments duplexes and that sort of thing. You know, they pay a higher rate and they were kind of left out, and a lot of them didn't know that, they'd read it in the champion, and they put extra items out that weren't getting picked up, so, I never got a chance, so thank you for adding, including that.
Yeah, and thank you to Ryan, I know, that was, that was instrumental as we went through the contract and the agreement this last fall, so yeah, that's, that's great.
Big improvement. You know, and I like to study your competition, like I know some of the Corbett residents, and they have a kind of an interesting service that might interest you, it may not, but they, they're allowed to put like metal items out anytime, you know, like barbecues, hot water heater, lawnmowers, and, you know, it's valuable, I don't know if it's practical with your operation, but something to think about, that's one thing they, they're doing that we're not.
Good to know, yeah, that's, I always like to know what the competition's doing too, so that's, yeah, appreciate that.
Ryan, I had asked you this before, and I did, I never got an answer back on it, is I'm interested to know what the, how much we charge in a month, the entire city of Troutdale, just for residential, not commercial? I'm curious to know what that figure is.
How much we charge in.
Well, how much, how much is the gross bill that waste management receives every month? If that's possible.
I would have to defer to Dave on that, yeah, I don't know, also, like.
Okay, I don't go to a lot of work, but if it's something readily available, I'd be interested in knowing that number.
My apologies if I had not, yeah, followed up.
I had a quick question. One of the things I was most excited about after this last time was the new garbage can offer, and we talked about, I think maybe that this time of the year was going to be when we could get something like that. And on, on your little thing, it said potential, so that word potential really kind of made me sad, and so, just because you follow up on new garbage can options around Troutdale, I don't know if you guys heard us enough times, but it's windy generally, and I think some new options would be great, so.
Yeah, I, we definitely have heard folks, Counselor, when I get phone calls a lot about the wind and garbage, and so I think when I brought those new carts before the city council, before, I was hopeful in the timeframe that I was going to be bringing it again during a rate review. Unfortunately, I don't think that rate review happened last year, if I'm not mistaken, and so it's been delayed, because we can't, waste management isn't going to give it to us for free, that we're going to have to charge, they're going to have to charge us and our ratepayers unfortunately for that. I was not able to strong-arm Dave into that, into the franchise agreement, so, yeah, it's, it's going to be a rate review item, and I'm just not, we just haven't been yet on that cycle to bring it before, but it's definitely going to be, when we have a rate review next time, it's going to be an item that you all can vote on whether or not you want to have.
And it would be something that somebody could opt into, right? You don't have to have this, but, or is it going to be something that's like, this is what we have to do now?
It's probably going to have to be an all or nothing. I don't know if they're going to be able to pick and choose home A, home B, versus, you know, a few on the blocks that do one way, others, I don't know, but I know buying in bulk typically and servicing everything the same is going to probably be more cost-effective than one-offs.
Okay. If we could just, in that presentation, have some, whether it's data or some, something to say why it would be better, or be better locking, or better for keeping our trash in the cans when it's windy, like, it'll just kind of help solidify, I mean, I already think it's great, but that doesn't mean everybody else will, I always want to make sure they see it, so.
Yeah, I've heard a little bit of feedback on both sides from residents, some saying, I'm, I'm good with not paying an extra dollar and a half, $2 per month, and I'd rather just keep with the bungee, and then I've heard others, similar to yourself, yes, please, I don't care what it's going to cost, let me, let me have that. But, you know, I will say to follow up on that, we did have, of course, some, some wind early in the, I think, November or December, and, and it kind of prompted waste management, because I had a lot of feedback that was, hey, we're getting killed out here with our bungee cords not getting repaired, they're broken, what's going on, why is not, why are the drivers squeezing the carts all the time and busting them open? And so I did bring that feedback to Dave and his team, and they did follow up in December into January, I think, assessing, you know, what carts needed repairs and doing those repairs in the field. I hope that everyone got those repaired, but I'll just say it again, if, if you're not getting that fixed, or if you see drivers doing things to break them, please let me know, and then I can relay that message back to Dave and his team.
And if I can add, Counselor, yeah, we haven't forgotten about it either, and actually, when we brought those carts to the city council meeting, you know, they were pretty robust locks, and I think they're considered bear carts, you know, so a bear can't even open those, and they open when they're, you know, turned upside down with a gravitational lock. The vendor just reached out. a gravitational lock. The vendor just reached out to me, or I spoke to the vendor, or one of the vendors that we use, and they, and I think I mentioned this to Ryan, they, they have another option that is a little less in cost, but just as good. So, I'm supposed to be getting one of those carts here soon. They're shipping it here. So, that might, it just might give us another option that might be a little less in cost, but just as effective, too.
I will say, we still have those carts on display at Public Works at the, at the entryway. So, if you ever want to go see them again, we still have them there, ready to go for the next rate review item, so when we can bring them back for everyone to see.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Any, I'll invite public comment on the introduction of Woods Management here. How about out in Zoom? Anyone wish to address us?
Mayor Ripma, Paul Delcox, Troutdale.
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
On the textile recycling, there's a company that's got boxes around town. There's some in the old Safeway parking lot, and there's some in the Lowe's at Wood Village. Aren't, aren't they doing the same thing? I can see the convenience of curb pickup, but people, people already have the option of dropping at those boxes.
Yeah, and if I can respond, that, that, that's true. However, we, you know, this is certainly something that we want to make convenient to our customers with this, with this free pilot and, and see how this works out, plays out, having customers just with, you know, being able to put those bags right out at the curb on the collection day, so.
All right. Anyone else in Zoom? Anyone in the chamber here wish to address the council under public comment? All right, well, hey, thank you.
Yeah, you'll be seeing us again.
We'll see you again.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on to agenda item five point one, an update from Emilio Inc. on the events that the city sponsored in twenty-twenty-four.
Good evening. Can I present a little quick slide for everyone? We tried to come through here. How's everybody tonight? We're a little tired. A long day for us, but we're grateful to be here and have an opportunity to come back and say thank you for the money that we received last year for our Run for Red event. You know, I like to be true to my word, and you guys had a couple canceled meetings, we had a couple canceled meetings. So, anyway, we're here tonight. So, our event that was last June raised just over fourteen thousand dollars. We doubled our, more than doubled our participants, and it was great. It was even pouring down rain, and everybody still came and ran, and it was beautiful, and a rainbow came out. It was, it was fun. So, with some of that money, what we did is, you know, we have other community events that we do. We have an annual rummage sale that is absolutely nuts. We usually raise between seven and nine thousand dollars. We bumped that up this year with part of those proceeds. We added a new event, which was a youth summit, which was based just on mental health for kids. It was a free event for families to be able to register their kids for. So, they got to come and hear some national speakers and do some workshops. It was our first time doing that, so we kind of was learning that process as we go, but it was a good event as well. We adopted two Christmas families, we participated in four other community events, and we're still looking for another school to be challenged today. And Run for Red is, again, scheduled for this year, so. That's all we have.
Well, you might as well say when.
Are you coming?
That's on when?
June seventh.
Okay, great. Oh, excellent. Thank you.
And we hope, we'll, we'll plant this little seed right now, that maybe we outgrow where we're at enough this year, that we have to ask for a bigger route next year, which would be, what is it? Troutdale.
Copy the Troutdale and try it.
Yeah.
That would be amazing.
Good hills.
Be a bigger route.
And we have some serious runners that come to our Run for Red. So, yeah, they'd be challenged by a new route, too.
All right. Thank you, council. Anyone have questions, comments? Yes, Zach?
Yeah. Hey, neighbor.
Neighbor.
Just wanted to say I really respect and appreciate what you guys do. It's terrific work, and I love seeing that come around every year at the rummage sale, and not just because there's good finds, but because of what it all goes for and the community building that goes around there.
Thank you. Zach, I didn't even realize that Zach was on city council until today. He was like, hey, I seen you on the agenda. I'm like, what, huh? So, he gets the privilege of putting up with that parking disaster in the nineteenth circle called the SAC.
All worth it.
It's about five days long and a huge mess, but it is worth it. It's a lot of work, but a good feeling afterwards, so.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah. How does somebody go about donating something for the sale?
You can text us, message us on the Facebook page, email us. Oftentimes, we'll pick up, or you can drop off. We usually start collecting around this time, end of March, first part of April. And of course, we can do a tax write-off, too.
Thank you for coming back with this update. It was nice of you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Anyone out in Zoom wish to address the council on the?
When is the sale? It's usually the first week of July.
Typically the hottest days of the whole summer.
What's the first week in July?
Sale.
The sale.
Rubbish sale.
The rubbish thing. Yeah, okay. All right. Anyone on Zoom wish to make public comment? Hearing no one. How about here in the council chambers? Anyone else? Anyway, we appreciate the report.
Yeah.
Thank you. About the good work. We'll move on to the five point two, cocktail tourism update. Marley?
Sorry, I need to plug my computer in. This lasted long enough that it was already wudged up.
Don't want it to go dark.
And then give me a brief moment while I get this presentation pulled up for you all. Thank you for your patience. I might actually want you to let me in if you don't mind. I'm good. I don't know how to do that. I don't know. As I was serving at the end, that's not where we want to be. All right. Thank you, Mayor Ripma and councilors for having me here tonight. I'm gonna be giving you a presentation on tourism and, tourism and economic development review for twenty-twenty-four. So, I have prepared this presentation for you all. Briefly, an agenda. We'll have an introduction, and then we'll talk about the destination strategy and brand, downtown event data, domestic tourism report, and then what we have on the to-do list for twenty-twenty-five. So, as an introduction, many of you are aware of this background, but it's always good to recap the history and how we got here. In nineteen-seventy-two, Troutdale established its transient lodging tax of six percent, which goes towards the general fund. And in nineteen-ninety-nine, that tax was increased by point nine-five percent for tourism promotion activities, such as operating the visitor center and events. And this was distributed to the West Columbia Gorge Chamber of Commerce. In July of twenty-twenty, the Troutdale Budget Committee and City Council created the Tourism and Economic Development Division by redirecting that point nine-five percent TLT into the general fund in creating this division, which the tasks include tourism promotion of Troutdale, implementation of the town center plan, vision and goals, economic development, and business recruitment, and marketing and promotion of the confluence at Troutdale for the Urban Renewal Agency. This presentation is going to serve as a twenty-twenty-four year-end review and highlight some of the progress we've made over the, I can't believe I'm saying this, nearly five years since the creation of this division. So, first, I want to start with the destination strategy and brand. Last year, I presented on the destination strategy for you all, and this was something that we began working on in twenty-twenty-three and received a grant from Travel Oregon to conduct this work and the public engagement that was involved with that. And that outlined a fifteen-year strategic plan to establish Troutdale as a premier gateway to the Columbia River Gorge in a vibrant small-town destination. The strategy was developed through community engagement, stakeholder input, and collaboration with tourism experts. It focuses on enhancing car-free travel, revitalizing downtown, connecting the Sandy River, and building a strong tourism ecosystem. Again, those strategic impact areas are becoming the gateway to the Columbia River Gorge and a base camp for car-free travel, increasing connectivity with the wild and scenic Sandy River while protecting its ecological values, improving the vibrancy of our quaint downtown by evolving the visitor experience and connecting and building our tourism ecosystem. One of the other objectives of that project was to create a branding strategy for us, a marketing strategy for us moving forward. And so, our brand objective that was created is to establish Troutdale as an easy must-visit destination for Columbia River Gorge travelers. Like Code River Vista House in Moleskaus, Troutdale becomes synonymous with an outstanding gorge experience. So, one of the first things that we did in, in twenty-twenty-four was redefine the destination brand. As you know, the city has gone through a rebranding process and has the brand that, you know, is on all of your lovely name tags and the city documents and everything else. And this is not in any way to replace that. This is specifically for marketing of Troutdale to visitors coming to the area. So, that still lives as our city brand, but this is really for our marketing purposes. And Troutdale's brand position, positioning establishes it as the gateway to the gorge, promoting it as this must, must-visit starting point for exploring the gorge in a destination in its own right. It highlights our small-town charm, our vibrant downtown with local businesses, our proximity to natural wonders like the Sandy River and the historic Columbia River Highway. The goal is to shift the perceptions from being just a stopover to a dynamic adventure hub with recreational activities, local culture, and unique attractions. The brand voice is inviting, folksy, and adventurous, and it resonates with visitors seeking outdoor experiences and small-town hospitality. We're starting to use the tagline, "It all starts in Troutdale." So, this is the destination brand's primary logo, which, as you can see, it looks very similar to the city's brand. It's supposed to complement the city's brand. It's not supposed to feel very different or, or whatnot from the existing brand that we have, but this is our visitor-facing way of marketing to tourists coming to the area. And so, you'll be seeing that a bit more, and as you can see, it is the brand used in this entire presentation tonight. So, moving on to downtown events, we have some visitation reports from that. And I did present some of this information in the past year. However, now we have the final twenty-twenty-four numbers, so that's sort of what we're comparing those two. In twenty-twenty-one, the city began coordinating the First Fridays in town, and this graph shows downtown visitation each Friday of the event going back to twenty-eighteen. The chart also shows how each First Friday compares to the average Friday of that year. So, as you can see in pink, that is the average Friday of the year versus each of the months are in the shades of blue and green. In July of twenty-twenty-four, we unfortunately were not able to have a First Friday because of the heat wave. And in twenty-twenty-five, the First Friday falls on July fourth, so we will again not be having a July First Friday. So, we won't have some July data for a little bit. But we did take in, we did take the feedback that we heard from the community and the businesses to heart, and there was quite a desire to extend the event longer. If you've ever attended First Fridays, you've probably gotten there and felt like it's just ending when the party should be beginning. So, and a number of the downtown businesses have said this as well. So, we're beginning to shift our marketing from five to eight to five to sunset. That way, the event can extend longer into the evenings. And this means that for, in, for the vendors themselves, there'll be different end times depending on which month it is and depending on when the sunset happens. But for our public-facing marketing, it's just going to say sunset to keep it simpler and hopefully to keep people in downtown for longer into the evenings. So, the next one I want to talk about is the Troutdale Arts Festival, which you'll be hearing a little bit more about that after myself as well. Troutdale Arts Festival is not a city-run event, but the city is the largest supporter and sponsor, and it coordinates closely with the event coordinators of this event. In twenty-twenty-three, we worked with the coordinators to move the event into downtown Troutdale because we have proof from the First Fridays that events downtown have a significant positive economic impact on our downtown businesses. And I want to highlight in these two charts in particular, you can see on the left, we have the daily downtown visitation in twenty-twenty-four, and the peaks, I don't know that I have a little cursor that you can see or not, but this peak right here is the Saturday and Sunday of the Troutdale Arts Festival, which far exceeds every other day in terms of visitation in our downtown. So, we really did see a, a large impact from moving that event downtown. You can see in the chart next to it where Saturday and Sunday are compared to previous years and also compared to the average Saturdays and Sundays of the year, and just how many people are coming into our downtown for that event. So, it's having a great positive impact, and it's a great opportunity for our businesses to market themselves to those people who are attending the event and coming to buy some art. Next, we have Windy Wonderland, and the city has put on a Christmas tree event for many years now, the annual tree lighting. But in twenty-twenty-one, when we created this division, we decided to expand the event to make it a greater economic driver for our businesses. So, we moved it to Sunday because more people were likely to come out for a tree lighting on Sunday than they were on Friday, when they'd already gotten home, eaten dinner, and were all cozy in their houses. And so, the first year, we had it just on Sunday, then we expanded it to Saturday and Sunday in twenty-twenty-two. In twenty-twenty-three, it was Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and then in twenty-twenty-four, it was back to Saturday and Sunday. So, we've tried a number of different things with Windy Wonderland. Our location has also changed depending on whether or not the general store has been rented or not, or if we have other locations. The past two years, the holiday market has been within the Troutdale house. So, you can see in this graph how the Friday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday visitation are, and then the, the lighter pink is that whole weekend total, and then that's compared to the dark teal, which is the average weekend total of that year. So, we're still seeing more people in our downtown during this event than we are in an average weekend of the year. And in terms of changes to this event for the coming year, we do have some ideas on that. And one of the things that we would like to do is create this, create more of a season of events, turn Windy Wonderland into more of a season rather than just a singular weekend, hopefully bring more people into downtown throughout the entire holiday season and not just for one weekend. We have an example of another community, White Salmon, has a wildflower festival, and- We have an example of another community, White Salmon, has a wildflower festival, and they have, this festival is not the city or an organization putting on events every single day for the entire month, but rather it's a packaging of the entire community's events into one singular piece of marketing so that more people are likely to come out throughout the entire month of May versus just that one weekend. So we're going to sort of take that model and collect all the community events that are happening in the holiday season between Thanksgiving and Christmas and/or Thanksgiving and New Year's, whichever we decide on. And just help market everyone's events. So if there's a downtown business that is doing something, we'll help promote their events and package it into Windy Wonderland as well. Next, I want to get into the tourism visitation data. We have a contract with Placer AI to get this visitation data, and we can look at the really big picture, like the whole city, all the way down to individual businesses. And it has some really, really great insights, and it's very fun to take a deep dive into all of this. I wish that I could have given you a full report on 2024, but they were having some glitches in their data. So instead, you're getting 2023. But I have seen some of the 2024 numbers, just not enough for a full report. So I can give a little bit of insight on that as well as I read you all this. In 2023, the city of Troutdale attracted 11.7 million visits from 1.7 million non-residents, generating nearly $85 million in visitor spending. On average, 25% of all visitation is from out-of-state tourists, and the city sees over 100,000 visits a month from May through September, which is our largest tourist season. One of the largest drivers of tourism in the city is McMenamins Edgefield, a 74-acre historic hotel that features, well, you all know what Edgefield is. I don't have any to recap that. And they have their renowned summer concert series, which definitely have a large impact on visitation for our community. Another popular tourist destination is Sugar Pine Drive-In, which earned recognition in the New York Times this past year as one of the 26 best dishes we ate across the U.S. in 2024. So we anticipate that that will continue to drive a lot of traffic to their restaurant in this coming year for all the people that now know that they exist. So in 2023, we saw that 11.7 million total visits. We had 120,000 overnight trips, which are the total number of separate overnight trips. The total number of actual visit nights is 230,000. So people are typically staying between two and three nights when they come here, sometimes one, but it's around that. And then our total visitor spend is $84.2 million. In 2024, I don't have the full report, but what I can say is that we do have a slight decrease in the visitor spend. And that is only in the areas of gas, hotel, and entertainment, which are all directly related to the fact that McMenamins Edgefield had fewer concerts in 2024 than they did in 2023. So less people staying at McMenamins, less people going to concerts, and less people getting gas when they go to leave the concerts. So those do have quite a large impact on our overall visitor spend. Our top domestic markets ranked by visit nights are the Seattle Metro, Corvallis, Boise, Eugene, Los Angeles, and Bend. And another great way to see this is in this report, which you can sort of see the overnight trips, the visit nights, and the total visitor spend. So just because a community has a lot of people coming here doesn't mean that they're spending a lot of money here. As you can see, Corvallis does not spend a lot of money in Troutdale, but they do spend a lot of nights here. Whereas Seattle has a lot of trips here, a lot of nights here, and a lot of money here. We also, you can see that the really high numbers from Richland, Pendleton, the DOWs is also very high. These are all places where people are stopping to get gas, who are from those communities primarily, is what I've concluded from looking at the data. But you can see with the visit nights and the overnight trips, how many people are actually tourists staying overnight in the area. Make sure I didn't forget anything I wanted to say on that. Oh, the one last thing I was going to say is to put the visitation dollar numbers into perspective. We have 16,000 residents, and in order to have that same economic impact in our community, every single resident in the city of Troutdale will need to spend $5,000 within the city. So that's sort of comparing how much revenue or how much visitor spend we have from tourists versus what it would take one of our citizens to have that same economic impact within our community. And to give a quick comparison, our neighbors in Gresham, which have just shy of over 100,000 more residents than us, generated 92.7 million in visitor spend. So they're not much further ahead of us, which really just highlights the fact that Troutdale is a destination and that people are seeking us out and coming to visit here and spend their dollars here. So when you look at the 2023 visitor spend by the million dollars, you can see that the largest categories are for hotels and gasoline, which shouldn't be surprising to us with the Frontage Road and with McMenamins Edgefield and our other hotels. One of the things that I like to look at with this, though, is that when you add gasoline and hotels together, you can see that 77% of our visitor spending is being taxed because we have gas taxes and hotel taxes. So we're receiving tax off of 77% of the dollars that tourists are spending within our community. This is another chart that'll probably look pretty familiar to you because I showed it to you in September. Well, for everyone who was here in September. But we didn't have the last couple of months of the year in terms of visitation for our downtown. And I'm happy to report that downtown visitation was the highest recorded visitation that we have since 2017. We don't have numbers prior to 2017, but this means that we are exceeding our pre-COVID numbers in terms of visitation. And nine out of the 12 months all broke records for visitation. I had predicted that we would have between 392,000 to 459,000, and we exceeded that. And we actually had 475,764 visits to downtown Troutdale in 2024. So really happy with those numbers and the fact that we're breaking these visitation records and surpassing our pre-COVID numbers. And things are looking really great with that. Oh, yeah, here's the overall visitation. You can see the very clear drop for COVID and then where our estimates were. So then finally, I just wanted to talk really quickly about some of the things that we'll be working on this year. I'll keep this really short, but we'll continue to do all the things that we've been doing for the past five years, such as promoting Troutdale, participating in planning and management meetings for the gorge, managing events, operating the visitor center, staffing the Town Center Advisory Board, and recruiting new businesses. But we also are hoping to roll out the new destination brand, which includes updating the Explore Troutdale website, creating maps and brochures, getting those in the visitor center and welcome centers in hotels across the state. We also would like to begin collecting transient lodging tax on the short-term rentals. Currently, the transient lodging tax is only paid by the hotels that remit the taxes to us and some of the online collectors, but not the largest one, which is Airbnb. Airbnb requires a specific language in the municipal code in order to collect that tax on the short-term rental owner's behalf. So our municipal code needs to be updated in order to do that. So that's something that will be for you in the near future. And then planning some activation events for the new riverfront park and how can we continue to drive visitation there and plan new and exciting things, and the creation of a local Main Street program. Thank you all for your time and let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, questions? Questions, Marley?
I feel like that was very rapid fire. So also, if you have questions later, you can feel free to email me at any time or if you want to see further reports, I'm happy to send those to you, too.
One quick question. Is there something we're missing that you see there's a need for with the tourists? Is there something they're wanting that we're not providing?
Something they're wanting that we're not providing? I don't know that I can say specifically that there's one singular thing. I think that we see a lot of people coming on Mondays, and not a lot of businesses are open on Mondays. So that's one thing that we hear is that people wish there was more things to do on Mondays, on those other days that, you know, our shops like to be closed because they want some time off, but they're busy days for tourists. We really don't hear a lot of things that people wish that Troutdale had. We hear lots of positive, "Oh, we didn't know you were here. We're so glad we found you. Lucky we stumbled into the visitor center." We don't sell the Forest Service permits or the State Park permits, and that's something that people would appreciate if we could sell in the future. We get inquiries about that a lot. So that's another one that we'll be looking at. More events. People always love events, so.
Is that good enough?
Yeah, well, thank you.
More smelt.
More smells.
The numbers were impressive. That's greater than our annual budget in tourism. So I was really surprised to see that.
Yeah, yeah, it's really fun to get to dive into that data. And one other thing that I didn't have a chance to put into here, but we did apply for another grant to hopefully be running the Sandy River Shuttle Pilot Program. And that's something that if we are successful in getting that grant, tourists will actually be able to float the Sandy River like they do the Deschutes and Bend. And that's a brand-new tourism experience that we don't currently have and that tourists can't participate in, that they could. So they might not know to ask for it right now, but hopefully, once we get that grant, we can prove the success of that. And if you know anything about Deschutes and Bend, you know how successful and positive that can be for our community.
Send us your presentation, please. That was good. Anything else? I'll ask for invite public comment, if any, from Zoom. Anyone on Zoom? Wish to address us on this? Anyone in the room? Saul, please.
Hello, my name is Saul Pompeo. And I talk about tourists. It's really my passion. My family, for many years, we do passion of a tourist. If you saw the graphics, in the August is when we have a lot of tourists. We make money, doesn't matter what. My suggestion, like we do before, we do events in the time we don't have too much business. And this is very important to understand. The tax, lodging tax, is three parts. One part is comes to Oregon to bring more tourists to the area. The another part is go to the city for recover because when you have a tourist in town, they go to spend money. Why? They go to use the roads, they go to use the water. That doesn't mean it's good to have a tourist if the tourists don't spend money in the local town. And by the definitions, in the tax, lodging tax, tourism means the money go to spend the tourists on town. The goal for that tax lodging is make sure the tourists spend the money in the local business. Because you can do a big event, everybody's happy. But if the local business don't make money, what is the reason you like tourists? Because fun? It's very important to understand the goal for the tourists is make sure the business, the local business, make money. When you events and bring vendors for outside, what is the goal? The goal is do a nice event and have a bunch of tourists, and the local business, we looking how we cannot boost business. And this is the point I request. We request to have, because when they close the street for our business, our regular business don't come. I can show you I have reservation until 2026. If you lock, if you close the street, I cancel my events because my regulars cannot show. So I go to lose money. 25, 40% on my sales if I don't put tables and chairs outside. I need to put tables and chairs outside for recover the money I go to lose when you go to close the streets. Why I don't want to pay for outside? If you go to any carnival or festival, you saw how expensive sell all the drinks. And the reason they sell expensive is because that vendors, they need to recover the money go to pay on the space they use it. But like a local business, I cannot increase for one day my business. Imagine one customer comes and I told, "Oh, today the spaghetti meatballs is 40% more." I say, what happened? I cannot do it. The local business, we cannot increase our prices for one day for pay the fee for take outside our tables and chairs. How I request is in the events, they allow to the business, put our tables or chairs outside with not cost. And don't bring vendors for food and drinks for outside. Because if they bring vendors for outside, what is the goal for the event? May be somebody else make money. Remember, it's a tourist. The idea is the visitors spend money in the local business. And you know, the Free Friday, we started Free Friday 20 years ago, and it's a business, it's an event for the local business. Very nice, the city start to help us, the organization, and they do a great job. But the thing is, we cannot forget the goal. The goal for the events is make sure the business make business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you get all that? Anyone else in the room wish to address us on this? Well, then, thank you, Marley. And we'll move on to 5.3, a brief update on city manager recruitment, impact on council schedule.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity. As I mentioned on the agenda, it is to be a brief update. So this is week three of our 16-week recruitment process that the council initiated at its last meeting. And since then, I've had an almost three-hour startup meeting with Jensen Associates, going through pages of checklists and items to get lined out and prepared. And part of that process was to nail down some of the dates and events a little bit more specifically. And that's what I wanted to revisit briefly with you this evening. In your packet, there's one that looks familiar from the last time, but it has a few orange circles on it that I wanted to in particular point out. As I mentioned to you, the last time around, we have a special work session scheduled for Tuesday, April 1st. That's going to be when Jensen brings the materials that they have developed as a result of all of the stakeholder interviews, the public comment and receptions, the gathering of kind of the background material. There's a whole checklist of city information that are provided for them as they're pulling all of this together. And it'll be sort of your opportunity to say, yes, that is, looks good. That's what we're looking for. So that they can then put it into kind of the marketing format and get prepared to do the actual recruitment. I'll take what gets finalized that evening, get it into a packet, and you will formally adopt it a week later at the regularly scheduled April 8th council meeting. That formal adoption then will allow for the opportunity to hold the interviews in an executive session because you will have adopted the standard hirings, practice, the job description, the policy directives, et cetera, the other things that are required by the open meetings law that allows for the executive session. The flip side of that agenda is the, in particular, what I wanted to point out tonight. Once you've adopted those things, Jensen gets the materials put into the marketing package, and they, they launch off into their marketing process, getting it posted, marketing out to their various contacts, et cetera. And the recruitment period is essentially open. The recruitment period closes on the holiday, June, or May twenty-sixth, and then they go through their preliminary screening, preliminary interviews, et cetera. And then one of the dates that we nailed down that was kind of floating the last time that I wanted to point out is that Monday, it's not a typical meeting day for you, but Monday night, June the ninth, right here in this room, you would have an executive session and where Jensen will present essentially the results of the recruitment, how many were applied, what the initial filtering, minimum qualifications, et cetera, their initial preliminary interviews, assessments, et cetera. And then they will, they will present to you their recommended finalists, as well as they'll talk about the candidates that didn't meet that recommended finalist and potentially some alternates in case one of those finalists drops out, which is not uncommon, folks that are looking for a job. They may very well land another one in the meantime and might not make it to our interview. So it's, you know, not a, not necessarily a bad sign, just it can, can limit our choices if we don't have an alternative or so. That's, again, that's a added night to your schedule. And I know you, you had mentioned in particular about the school calendar, and so I wanted to make sure that I circle back around and, and identify that, that for you. That, again, is an evening meeting. It's, you know, tentatively have it from six to eight. It might run longer than that, depending on your questions and discussions. But that's intended to be that Monday evening. It's important that night that we get to that conclusion, because they then have to reach out to the candidates to get them to make their travel arrangements to get here for the interviews. And at this point in time, the interviews, there's a tour that will be scheduled for the candidates the morning of Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. They have panel interviews all afternoon on the three panels. The council schedule, which is the other big impact that, based on Jensen's kind of successful process that they have, the council interviews will run all day during the day on Wednesday, June the twenty-fifth. As I had mentioned at the beginning of this recruitment process, it's likely to impact some of you and relates to vacation days and work schedules, et cetera. And so I wanted to try and come back and confirm that as, as soon as possible so that arrangements can be made. Jensen's practice and what they have found works best, and from having done this many more times than I could ever count, is that after you've been saturated with that information all day long, it's not the time to try and make a decision, but it's to let it kind of percolate overnight. Come back the next morning, and it's a deliberation session. That's also a point in time where you've had a chance to think about things overnight, but it's also a point in time where Jensen will present more of their background research that they've done, more assessment information that they've gathered from the various interview panels, from the, from the receptions that were, occurred earlier in the week, et cetera. All of that, they would then provide as part of your then deliberation process. I put it in the staff report that it begins at nine AM on the twenty-sixth. The one pushback that I got from Jensen was that they said, well, sometimes the deliberations run two hours, sometimes they run four hours. They said six hours was the record they've had. So, you know, my three hours might be a little short. So as we get closer to that, we may actually schedule it to start at eight AM to give you more maneuvering room, because we then have a public meeting scheduled to occur at noon that day for you then to announce the next steps to be able to move forward with a conditional offer, et cetera. So we don't want to crowd you into, well, we started at nine, and it's, you know, eleven forty-five, and you still have an hour worth of arguing you want to have over choices, so we may move it back versus what I said there in the, in the staff report, but it would still be that morning. So that's, again, the other orange circle there that I wanted to try and make you aware of. Again, it's a during-the-day impact, and wanted to be able to have you have that information as soon as possible for you to plan for your, your calendar. And with that, that is my brief update. And I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor, or anyone.
Questions? Comments from the public? Anyone on Zoom wish to comment? How about here in the council chambers? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's pretty grueling. Thank you, Eric. That was great. And clear. Let's go to six point one, a request from Troutdale Arts Festival for the city of Troutdale to be a sponsor for the twenty twenty-five festival.
Mayor, if I could inject here?
Yes.
Just for background information, the Arts Festival, two years ago, asked for a donation. The council provided ten thousand dollars. Last year, they came back for another donation, and the council provided fifteen thousand dollars. The council has no obligation to donate any money to the Arts Festival. It is a private event, but as you've heard already, it provides value to the city, and it's your sole discretion as to what, if any, money is donated to the event. Shannon, it's all yours now.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to be here to talk a little bit more about the Troutdale Arts Festival and ask for your support. Thank you for helping me. I wanted to start with a little bit of history. Oh, first of all, I, I should introduce myself, and I apologize for that. I am Shannon Chisholm, if I do not know you yet, and I hope to meet all of you soon. I own a local event production company, and I have been doing community events similar to the Troutdale Arts Festival for, I was saying thirty years, but I was just calculating while I was sitting there, and I'm getting close to forty now. So this is something I'm very, very passionate about. A little bit of history, if you could move this forward, thank you. Little bit of history, the Fall Festival of the Arts was held the third weekend of September in twenty seventeen in Glen Otto Park. And it was, as Marley said, run by the West Columbia Gorge Chamber. A note, it rained all but one year. Council lady knows. In twenty nineteen, the chamber handed the festival over to a group of volunteers to manage, and they started a nonprofit, the Cascadia Arts Association, and they began planning. They were an all-volunteer group. We know what happened in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. We had plenty of time to think about all that rain that hit in September. So when we came back in twenty twenty-two, the festival was renamed the Troutdale Arts Festival and moved to the spring. In twenty twenty-three, we had a number of discussions, and we moved to downtown. And that was specifically to help support the businesses in downtown, to draw more tourists into the area, and to draw more artists with a little bit easier in and out, load in and out of their arts. As beautiful as Glen Otto Park is, the logistics were challenging even on a dry day. Twenty, and as she said, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four were the two largest visitor days in downtown. And so we're really excited about that. Next one. Cascadia Arts Association stands very quietly in the background. They are a group of Troutdale volunteers who are incredibly passionate about this festival, and they've been working really hard to run the festival, streamlining their business practices. They created that nonprofit just to do this. So they, they've done a lot of work on creating, streamlining business practices, recruiting new board members, and making connections. They're a dedicated group who want to see the Arts Festival thrive, promote Troutdale, and they strongly value the commitment, the commitment of the city to this event. When we met to work out the details of moving the festival to downtown, we worked out how to create a full weekend of activity by partnering with the already-successful First Friday event and drawing in more out-of-area visitors. Looking at the graph that Marley provided, which is fantastic, you can see that the festival is growing and drawing more visitors each year. Sunday looks like it has less visitors, but the hours of the festival are much shorter. We, we start at ten and end at four on Sunday, just so we can get out and open the roads again. So it's still a great day for downtown. Next. This map just gives you an idea. It shows the basic layout of First Friday and then the Arts Festival. We have minor differences, but we're really working to make sure our maps align so that we don't have to do a lot of moving on Friday night when the First Friday vendors leave, and then Saturday morning early, all new vendors come in. Next. Little bit about the artists. So this is a juried fine art show, and artists apply through an international artist vendor software. They actually pay thirty-five dollars when they apply to be juried into the show. Only the best are selected with care not to have too many of the same medium. We tend to find that there are a lot of jewelers, so we're very careful to make sure that we have a wide variety of jewelry, and they're not next to each other, so we have a solid show. If they get selected, they pay two hundred and seventy-five dollars for their ten-by-ten space. So this is not on the lower end, like some of the farmer market, farmers' markets. There are eighty-five total spaces available within the footprint. In twenty twenty-three, over fifty percent of the artists came from out of the area. In twenty twenty-four, we're on track to see over seventy-five percent from out of area. That means those artists, their family and their friends, come to Troutdale, stay overnight, at least one night, eat in local restaurants and shop locally, supporting your local economy. Next. When we decided to close the highway for the weekend, we took into account the challenges local businesses face. We absolutely want everyone to be successful. We've set up shuttles to bring people to the event and move people around. We cut the booth rate in half and charge a hundred and fifty dollars for a local business to come out into one of those spaces and have a ten-by-ten space in front of their business. This also includes recognition in the twelve-page insert in the Outlook and the other regional papers. So if you look at that hundred and fifty dollars from a marketing perspective, it, just the ad in that, in that Outlook insert is a hundred and fifty dollars. And then we work with, with businesses to find ways to help with client drop-off and pickup and ways to make things easier so they can be successful. Next. Arts festivals are not inexpensive to run. They include professional management, artist management. We do a lot of targeted marketing to find those out-of-area people who like arts festivals, who like things like the coming into the gorge so that we can get them into your area. The entertainment, there's entertainment all day, both days, and then just the equipment and signage. Cascadia has been building on their sponsors list and making calls. Artists pay fees, and we work hard to find in-kind support where we possible, but we still need help. And so we are asking the city to support the festival at fifteen thousand dollars again this year. The artists are juried, the entertainment is being booked, and we're looking forward to an incredible weekend in Troutdale. We're asking for your support.
All right.
Does anyone have any questions? That would be a wonderful, it is the first full weekend of June, which is the sixth, that is First Friday, then the seventh and eighth is the Troutdale Arts Festival.
June, twenty twenty-five, okay. Okay, questions? Anybody here on council? Go ahead, Ryan.
So are the businesses given first opportunity to, to rent a ten-by-ten space in front of their business?
Yes, I don't place anybody in front until I ask them. And if they would like to purchase that space, then we can, we can put the, put them right in front of their business. I mean, we want to be helpful for everyone. The other thing I should have said is after last year, last year's event, we had a number of restaurants come out, and afterwards, I had conversations with two restaurants who really started to understand and are looking at menus to do grab-and-go food. Because one of the things we don't do at the festival is bring in outside food vendors that are in competition with your local restaurants. But if we have no food, people don't want to stay here and shop, and they're going to go elsewhere to find food. So we've got to find that balance. So I've got a couple of restaurants that have figured out how to do the grab-and-go kind of food, and I think that will really help us.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yeah, do you offer any kind of like promotion specifically to the vendors that encourage them and their families, whoever tags along for the weekend, to specifically spend money in town? Like any kind of partnerships with local businesses, it's like a voucher? You get part of, with your membership or anything like that?
We, we do, and I will say, in this particular event, if someone gives us or starts talking to us about that, we absolutely would. At other festivals that I do that are very similar, we give an artist bag that has a coupon from every local business. It has gotten more challenging, because I know costs are high, and they, giving away food or giving away a product can be challenging, but we absolutely can work with any business to make that work for both sides. Yeah.
Anything else? Questions from Zoom? Public commenter questions? How about in the hall, Saul?
Like a business downtown, we waiting whole year. We, we provide service even in the winter. We provide service with four-foot snow. My employees and myself, we waiting for the summer. The restaurant business is not only, my employees don't send life for the minimum wage. They waiting for their tips. And a server can do forty, fifty dollars per hour when we work. All my employees, servers, basters, hosters, we waiting for the summer for the good weekends, because it's when we can saving money for our winter, because we provide service all year. When we have four-foot snow, I lost money, doesn't matter. I open my restaurant, because it's a service. And the people for the truck stop, they need food. We deliver food to them. I know I go to lose money that day, doesn't matter I open. But we waiting for the summer. Comes the art festival and take the best weekend of the year. Why? I tell you why we cannot pay the fee. It's very simple. I have three foot, I need to pay four hundred and fifty dollars for the space on our front. How much I need to sell? I need to sell around three thousand dollars for recover it, because I pay employees. Then I cannot have the same, I put more employee for outside. In the restaurant business, we only make seven percent, seven percent to eight percent of profit. That's it. That means if I make a, if I sell a thousand dollars, I make seventy dollars in profit. How much I need to sell for cover four hundred and fifty? I know she have expensive. I understand. What they do before the, the festival in Glen Otto Park, and they don't like, because they rain. They comes to our town and use our customers and make a nice profit. Perfect. But what about us? You know, my building is cost me more expensive because it's in the front of the park. I pay more because the value of my building is more. I pay more taxes. I make more property taxes for stay in the front of the park. It's very valuable. When I open my business, I say, oh, this is the building. Why? Because the park is in the front. Every event, they go to help me, and they cost me. I pay more. I pay taxes more. I provide work for 25 people. And all my employees, they tell me, Saul, go and talk with us because this year we don't open. Because if I go to pay $450, I go to lose more money than I make it. And I know it's fun have, I love it to put my stand outside and make margaritas and my daughter and my wife, but I don't want to lose money in the summer, the whole weekend. Another problem we have, our business hour is 11:00 to 10:00. They shut the street and the event close at 7:00. Three hours, no business. That means when they do art festival, if I don't take tables outside, I lost 40% of my sales plus three hours at night. It's a huge gap. If I lost the business for two days, I lost my profit for one month. That's why I request, I don't know how you can help. Maybe the city council pay for, the local business can put outside. It's part of the tourist because that is the goal of the tourist TLT money. But if don't happen, what is the reason you guys take the money for the TLT money? The reason for the TLT money have the city is promote the local business, make money. Because if the local business don't make money, why you want tourists around? Why you wants to have a big event? And 75% is vendor for outside. It's fun, but this is business. Thank you very much, and I think so you can figure out how to do it.
So I have a question for you. So what would you like to see happen? Do you want a free space in front of your?
The local business, all the local, you know, somebody told me we cannot handle that many people. I serving every other night in Amazon, 1,000 people. Come on, we can handle as many people you come.
Mayor, I have a question. Saul, if you're given more free tables and you don't have to pay the fee, then haven't you just increased your revenues?
I go to sell the same.
Well, then why would you need the extra tables if you're not going to increase your revenues? That doesn't make sense.
If I don't have the, you know, when the people go to the festival, the people wants to sitting outside, they don't want to sit inside. That is the reason the people go to the festival. Regular my reservations, and I have four, I have reservation whole year. The people go inside. But if you put a festival, you want to sit outside. If I don't have sitting outside, I don't make money. I lose 50% because the restaurant inside go to do 50% empty. Everybody wants to sit it outside. But if I pay extra for that extra tables, with the same amount of sales, with more expensive.
A question, the topic before the council is, should the council support the arts festival? So do you think the council should support the arts festival?
Of course.
Okay. I want to make sure we got on topic.
Yes, of course, but you support the festival because you go to support the local business. If you support the festival, it's not for the local business, why you go to support the festival? What is the reason? It's for fun? I know the name of the show they go to do, but it's not for the local business. You know, the two things together needs to go. Our festival is nice, but we cannot lose money on the best weekends of the year. If it's middle of the November, who cares? But it's only, I, it's only 12 weekends on summer. And I can save in every single weekend for support the winter. Because in winter, sometimes two weekends is frozen. What we can do? 12 weekends, and they go to take one. It's 10% of the sales for the weekends. Only make numbers. You know, for serving outside, I need to have two employees, at least more. Two employees means $40 per hour. Six hours is $240 extra for put tables outside. 450. The food, the power, everything go together, we lost. You know how much the average seating, they give me $35. The people sitting, spend $35 in one hour. One table for four, how much money is? 150 in one hour, one table. I, my front, I only can put four tables. Really, it's very tight to make money with this restaurant. You saw the numbers. 150 for each table. Four tables, $600. Three hours, 1,800. That is how much I sell if I lucky. I need to, if I go to pay 450, and I need to pay employees, food, and all the expensive. Come on.
Mayor, on this different issue, I'm happy to have Marley check with all the other restaurants come town to see if there's any commonality of feelings and if there's any consensus.
Yeah, I wondered about that too. Yes, go ahead, John.
Shannon, how much does it cost for the space?
For a 10x10, it's 150.
Okay. And how much space does he get?
Well, last year, he had three spaces.
Last year, I don't go outside.
Last year, excuse me, he did not go outside last year, the year before.
The front of my table, the front of my business is three times. They do a great job. I never say they don't do a great job. They do a great job.
Marley?
The only thing is the fees. We only talk about the fees and the competition. That is the only point. Thank you.
Could I add one more thing just having? So the first year that we went downtown, we did stuff, we closed at 7:00 p.m. But then he mentioned that because he was open till 10:00, it would be nice to have something. So we actually have a concert in Mayor Square going until, it goes till about 9:00, just because we don't, you have residents in that area. But we tried to extend the music after the artists were there so that we could help and try to draw more people in. So I did skip that piece. We will do that again.
Well, the idea of holding the other restaurants, it's probably too close to June to try to get an answer on that.
Oh, no, I think Marley could do that pretty quickly in the next couple of weeks before our next council meeting.
Oh, I see.
If the council wants to consider giving a break to the restaurants downtown.
I take it, you are offering 150 instead of the 275 or whatever it was. And you do not have competing outside vendors bring in food carts and things to their event, which is something Saul mentioned before.
Yes, yes, we did have an ice cream truck last year, but with the prepackaged SpongeBob ice cream truck.
I see, okay, all right.
The rest, we're local businesses.
We can still approve the.
Yes, oh, yeah, this is simply about a city donation to the festival. The issue before the council has nothing to do with what the event charges.
I take it the idea of not charging for space in front of the restaurants that wanted, and I don't know if you've held them or tried, is not feasible for your purposes.
I can tell you from this event and from other similar events, if I give every business a space, a large percentage of them will say they're going to be there, and then they're not, then they don't show up because they don't have any skin in the game. And then I have big open spots in the middle of a festival, which makes it not conducive for the guests who are coming through. When you have big open spots, it doesn't feel like it's a full festival. So there is, there's a number of ways to look at it. I'm happy to have the conversation, absolutely.
All right. Well, we're not done with public comment, so. Well, yes.
I just wanted to mention that.
No, no, please come up. It's on the thing recording.
Excuse me, I just wanted to mention that if you're talking about open spaces and if you, like you said, you still have a little bit of time and you can talk with restaurant owners, if you make a commitment with those owners and you support those that make a commitment to have their tables, you shouldn't have any open spaces though.
Well, you shouldn't interfere people out there.
Yeah, I mean, but if you have this willingness to support them, you should be willing then to have them this free space and support the local businesses and just make this commitment both ways.
Can you state your name, please?
Martha Pompeo.
And Marley, please.
I was going to see if I could not provide public comment, but I felt like I should come up and say a little, a couple of things. To Shannon's point about having open spaces, we don't charge a booth space for our downtown businesses for the First Friday event. And it is, happens at every single event that a downtown business will tell me they're going to use that space and not end up coming out and using that space, every single one of them, without a doubt. And it's different businesses. One week, it'll be one business, the next, it'll be another one, and it takes a lot to track them down and try to confirm that they're going to be out there. But because they don't pay anything, and this is not anything Saul has ever done, just to put that out there, it's other businesses. But, you know, things come up, and since they don't have to pay any fee to be a part of it, they do just choose to not come out there. And it does, that's how you'll see the gaps in the event every once in a while is because the businesses don't come out and participate in the events. So in a perfect world, it would be great if every business participated, but they don't always do that. And that is a challenge that we have with First Fridays. I feel like I had other comments to mention about that, and now they all left my mind.
Well, on First Fridays, you don't charge.
No, we don't charge for First Fridays. So that, because that is a city-run event and not run by a nonprofit organization and doesn't have the same expenses, we do not charge for those spaces for First Friday. It does make it a lot more challenging in laying out the event because of the fact that we don't always know if the businesses are going to take their spaces or not. The other thing I was going to mention about the downtown businesses is that last year, we did have a number of downtown businesses pay the downtown business sponsor fee, including businesses that weren't restaurants. So that is open to non-restaurant downtown businesses as well who want to participate in the event. If there was some sort of consideration for not charging restaurants, I think that there'd have to be considerations for what that means for all the businesses downtown. And then you do run into the issue of if you're opening it up for everyone because it's free, then you do lose the amount of artists that are actually able to participate in the event. And those artists, as the data showed, are coming from out of the area and staying in our hotels. We know that many of them fill up the Sandy River RV Resort, McMenamin's Edgefield, the Comfort Inn. So they are staying in the hotels and spending dollars here in Troutdale. And then finally, we had really positive feedback from the restaurants that did pay the fee last year and come out into the street. They had great sales, and they felt like it was a worthwhile investment in their business to be a part of the event and to be on the street. And they did also appreciate that they were recognized in the Outlook advertising that Cascadia Arts Association and Shannon do to help promote the event. So the downtown businesses got additional promotion that put them on levels of sponsors with the other sponsors of the event as well, which is great. So, thank you all.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Well, the matters before us, does anyone have a proposal for a donation or not?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the $15,000 for this event. With just the footnote that I would eventually like to see these events become more self-sufficient over time. And I think it's worthwhile. I've been involved in a lot of these. And, you know, sometimes it's a really cheap advertisement is the way I look at it. And it's great for all of our businesses to get new people in town. And I know a lot of the vendors are also, they may seem like they're outsiders, but a lot of them are some of our food cart people or people that are trying to open a business in Troutdale and want to test the water. So there is a lot of advantages to it. I would ask that Marley find out what Saul's needs are and bring that back to council if he would. But there is a motion on the table.
Yes, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, the motion is to make a donation to the Troutdale Arts Festival.
Dave, I have a question.
Yes, Carol.
Is this in our budget already? Is this something that we put in our line, our line in our budget?
No, as would the Mount Hood Jazz Festival donation. It is an item that is not specifically budgeted for because we don't have an ask and we don't have council's approval. So what happens is in the budget reconciliation changes in June, you would approve this as an addition to the budget, so it passes budget law. But you have to vote on it and have an on-record vote, or the auditors give us a hard time.
Did anybody say the amount?
Yeah.
$15,000. Okay, just to make sure. And that's what we gave last year in 2023, it was $10,000. But the motion is for $15,000 for the Troutdale Arts Festival. Any further discussion? All right. Call roll.
Councillor Andrews.
Yes.
Councillor Allen.
Yes.
Councillor Juan.
Yes.
Mayor Rittma.
Yes.
Councillor White.
Yes.
Councillor Davidson. Councillor Lee.
Yes.
You got it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, let's, I don't know if anyone else needs a break. It's almost three hours into the meeting. I could use one, but I'm willing to let Marley start her additional unleash dog parks talk while I sneak out. All right, let's keep going. Marley? Forgive me, but.
Hello again, Mayor Rittma and councillors. Marley Boxler again here for the second presentation tonight.
And Erica Palmer, Community Development Director.
And we are going to be, we have before you all a resolution designating additional on-leash parks for dogs. Sorry, on-leash, this has been a long night. Additional parks to allow on-leash dogs at said parks. Sorry, I've been working all day. Brand's a little bit red at this point, but I'm pulling up the resolution right now.
Those parks are Mayor Square Depot Park and what is maybe called, or is going to be called Sharon's, but Heritage Park. Yes. And those parks are located east of 257th and in the parks master plan. The community really supported additional dog parks in these areas. And right now, in Mayor Square, people are visiting downtown. They have dogs. Oftentimes, you will see dogs in that park during, you know, First Friday events or the Troutdale Arts Festival. People come to visit the visitor's center. They get out of their cars. They, you know, will leash up their dogs and take them for a little walk. And we expect the same thing to happen in the new park adjacent to the Sandy River as well. So we recommended these three parks to the. So we recommended these three parks to the Parks Committee to be, to get their input and their feedback, and it was unanimous at the Parks Advisory Committee that they said, you know, please go to council and draft a, you know, draft a resolution and recommend these three parks to be on-leash dog parks. So that's what's before you tonight, and Marley and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, one other thing to add is just that these parks are all located within our downtown, are very close proximity to our downtown, and allowing dogs to be on-leash in those parks does have a positive economic impact on our downtown because many people do travel with dogs and they're looking for dog-friendly places to visit. And right now, we're not telling people they cannot bring dogs to these locations, so we see dogs constantly enjoying these parks with their owners. And the Sandy River Delta is a very popular destination for people from around the Portland Metro and beyond to visit with their dogs. Many people know of it as a dog park. And this future trail at the Sharon Nesbit, what may be called the Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park, will have connections to the Sandy River Delta, so it's a direct connection for those people who are visiting that park to be able to then visit our downtown. And that's the exact kind of objective and work that we want to do from our destination strategies. How can we take these recreation areas and pull more of those people into our community to spend those dollars here locally?
And to add one more thing, currently, it's legal to walk your dog all the way around Mayor Square Park but not step into the park. It's also, the Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park is also a gap in trails that do allow parks, like going north from there, under 84, on Harlow Street, and then on the metro trail north of it, those do allow dogs on-leash. And so if you don't approve the resolution, you're creating gaps in where people walk their dog normally.
Are there waste receptacles at these locations?
There's currently a waste receptacle at Depot Park, although with the construction, I'm sure it probably got removed or relocated because it's, it's a mess over there. There's also construction equipment, so, but we do anticipate that should this be approved in the future, we would have additional amenities for dogs and their owners to make sure that the responsibilities are maintained.
Yes.
That was my primary question as well. I know the Depot Park's gonna go through the redesign, and obviously, we're putting together the Sandy River from Park or Sharon Nesbit Park, but got that covered.
Other questions?
Well.
Oh, wait, Carol.
I do. I don't have a dog. I used to have a dog. I dog sit. My grand dog, doggies. But I'd just like to speak for those that don't want to be around a dog all the time. Like, when I come downtown or when I go to a park, I don't want to step in in something that somebody else has not been responsible. When I've come to the parks, when I've done, like, the Troutdale Arts Festival, there's a lot of responsible dog owners, but there's those that leave the icky feeling in your mouth when they're not being responsible, which brings me to that point, right? And so, like, I would be fine with it if there was, if we made sure that there was areas where dog owners could clean up their messes, that there's the receptacles there, that they're really watched, that if they're gonna be downtown where, especially the Mayor Square, where kids are there all the time, they're playing in the pond, they're running around the pond, how, what is the lookout of making sure that that's clean, that that stays clean for those kids that come down here and play?
Yeah, so our park staff currently maintains all, well, the one park doesn't exist yet, but the Depot Park and Mayor Square Park are both maintained by our park staff, who are out there to mow the lawn, to clean up, like, every single element of those parks. And I haven't noticed any issues with waste being left out. If they see waste, they do maintain that and pick that up, and I know that Jonah and Travis and Public Works have had them, you know, keep some tabs on how much time is being spent doing that work and whatnot. The dog owners that I've seen use these parks so far have all been responsible dog owners who have taken care of that. That's not to say that there couldn't be issues with that, but we definitely will have our park staff, you know, continue to maintain the parks at the same level that they currently do and let us know if there's continuing problems, and if there's ways that we can intervene with additional waste receptacles or other, you know, signage interventions to help reduce that.
So I know that park is really used a lot with kids, especially when you come down for dinners and summits, something that, it really is packed quite a bit, so.
Mayor.
That'd be my only thing, is the Mayor Square. Everything else I'm great with, it's just the Mayor Square.
They keep that lawn looking meticulous. I often joke that, I think it's funny, people seem to be afraid to step on it because it looks so nice, that everyone's like, ooh, we can't step on the grass. I'm always like, no, get on the grass. But, yeah, and they take really good care of that, and they always make sure that it's very clean, so.
And let me just add for refreshing of what we've done before, we already have in our ordinance that even when your dog is on a leash, you cannot be within 25 feet of a play structure, you cannot be within the bounds of stormwater quality treatment facility, you can't be upon a sports field unless written permission from I or Travis, you can't be in any area of the park that's posted no dogs, and most importantly, enforceability is a problem. They are responsible for collecting all feces if their dog leaves, and we have actually a fine structure for people not obey that, those laws. And you're not allowed to allow the dog within six feet of another person that by word or action is clearly saying, keep your dog away from me. So we already, if anybody just says, hey, please don't, they are required under the ordinance to stay six feet away from that person. So people have an affirmative ability to keep the dog away from them on a leash.
Yeah, I just did have a quick follow-up, actually. I did take a look at that packet earlier, and I was thinking, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there is a planned play structure or natural play area of some sort going on on the Sharon Nesbit Park, is that correct?
Yes, I think there's three.
There's three.
Okay, so with that in mind, is, I guess, is the idea to essentially have additional signage that just indicates no dogs in that specific area? Is that typically what, okay?
That could be, I mean, that could certainly be the case unless you wanted to have them be allowed at those. I'm not sure how you want to address that, but whatever the rule is, we'll make sure that it's signed accordingly.
Yeah, we always balance good informational signs without increasing sign pollution. It's a balance we try to reach.
This balance.
Yes, go ahead. You know, one concern I have is the Depot Park, because there's a wedding venue right next door to that, and they do outdoor weddings and stuff, so maybe check with that business and see if they have a concern of any kind. Other one is on the new Linear Park, the Sharon Nesbit Trail, where that ends at the North End. There's kind of an unofficial off-leash dog park, off-leash dog park there, and that's really part of the levee. You guys familiar with that?
Yeah, you're referring to the airport landing field, like overlay area.
Port of Portland property.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it might be confusing for people that are gonna see dogs off-leash, and they may have a tendency to let their dog off-leash as well.
Yeah, I don't think you can technically see that site from the, the specific park that we're talking about unless you were up on the 84 Bridge, because you have to cross Harlow, you have to go under the underpass and then cross Harlow to get over there. But they could see it if they were coming from potentially the Chalk Chalk Trail.
I see, and they're allowed on Chalk Chalk?
Yes, yes.
And who, Troutdale's gonna own this park, right? It's not gonna be Metro Park, even though they donated some money towards it.
Yeah, it's the city of Troutdale.
Okay.
Yes.
Enough. I love dogs. I'm gonna just have to take a break myself.
Other questions? I'll open to comments. A comment from Zoom. Designated, designating additional on-leash dog parks. How about here in the room? Any further public comment on this matter? All right, well, we have a resolution before us. Probably I'll wait till one gets back, but any further discussion?
No. Can I make a motion to adopt a resolution designating additional on-leash parks?
This is Zach, a second.
All right.
So while we're waiting, I was at Imagination Station twice this weekend with grandchildren, and there were dogs running around without a leash, and they were, well, we were there a total of three hours, and there was no dogs in the dog park back there, but there were dogs running around out of, in the field there. And they, there's a couple owners, I think, I see them quite a bit during the weekday, that there's a dog that runs around without a leash. And, I mean, it's a friendly dog, but if we're trying to be examples, we really, I don't know how to let owners know that really they need to be on leash, they can't just roam, especially right next door to that, that park.
Yeah, one of the things that we don't have right now, because it's not a busy season, is we will have OPS, we'll be doing security in the parks, and their primary May Labor Day, and that would be one of their responsibilities. So in the summer, there would be some reasonable patrols for those kind of issues. It's just March is not that busy in those places.
Oh, it's busy.
It was, yes.
If it's beautiful, it's busy.
I think that's another part, too, that we can probably look at increasing some signage, because I know that we've heard from people in the past that they don't know where the dog park is within the whole park property or how to get to it. So maybe some signage that better indicates where the location of the dog park is and that the sports fields are not built off-leash dog park, and that they're not allowed there to help further say that message.
Yeah, because it is hard to see when you're just parking, if you don't know the area. I mean, you can see it from Imagination Station when you're at the park, but if you don't know that that's for dogs.
Right. Or if you've heard that there's an off-leash dog park at that park and you couldn't see where it was, you might get confused.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. We're waiting. Call the roll, and the motion is to approve a resolution designating additional on-leash dog, or on-leash parks.
Counselor Andrews.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Wan.
Yes.
Mayor Ritma.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Davidson.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to a motion directing Public Works Director to investigate formation of a local improvement district in northeast Harlow Road.
I'm here to talk to you tonight about northeast Harlow Road, a road that's been in Troutdale for a long time, but probably very few Troutdale residents are familiar with or have ever visited. You can see from my staff report, vicinity map there, the road we're talking about, it branches off from what is technically now 257th Avenue, formerly Graham Road. Actually, right at the beginning, just kind of, it hops over the levee and then kind of curves back around to dead end at I-84. It's a sort of a light industrial type character of a road on one side, and the other side borders the Sandy River. As I said, it's a very old road. I've seen, in my long time working here, I've seen various records that would indicate to me that there's been a house on that road at least as far back as 1928, and that at one time, it probably connected through to downtown Troutdale through that grade rail crossing, just behind the north side businesses. Probably was some sort of a farmer market type road, is there farms out in the north part of town way back in the olden times. But of course, that all changed when I-84 came through, and this kind of became a very sort of out-of-the-way sort of, you know, back road that not many people really paid much attention to. It's getting more attention now. Industrial development has picked up on that road in the 2010s. The west side of the road's pretty much developed now entirely. The, and then with the I-84 path going underneath the freeway, the completion of the Chalk Chalk Trail, and now the pending completion of the new Sandy River Front Trail, this is basically the connecting route between those, the confluence, the new Sandy River Front Trail and the Chalk Chalk Trail. So I think a lot more people are gonna start seeing this road. So a road like this, it's completely underimproved. It basically has about 20 feet of pavement and very little else. There's no drainage system, there's no curbs, no sidewalks, very minimal gravel shoulders. And, you know, the city, and particularly the city staff and folks in Public Works and folks that are involved in transportation planning have been aware of this road for quite a long time, and, you know, presumed that it would be improved at some point. The way that would typically happen on a lot of roads, or I should say with development, what typically happens is the developer would be required to construct their hasty improvements if it's underimproved on their frontage. However, with a road like Harlow that's really underimproved throughout its length, experience has shown us, and I've seen it in my time here with some other roads, that if you do that in a sort of piecewise, patchwork fashion, you end up with not a very good road, and it really doesn't work out well for the developers, doesn't work out well for the city, and doesn't really give you a good end product, and it's not efficient way to do things. It's much better to do it as one complete project. So with Harlow Road, the approach we've taken over the last 15 years or so is that as development has occurred on that road, rather than require the developer to do hasty improvements, we've collected non-remonstrance agreements in lieu of that. Those basically commit the developer, the property owner, and their successor property owners to contribute their, their cost of their frontage improvements when the entire road is built out. That's kind of the concept behind the LID. A local improvement district is a special type of assessment district that the city can form. It's provided in state laws, provided in our local code, and what that does is basically create a district where the, the public improvements are apportioned, the cost of those are apportioned amongst the benefiting property owners, and possibly to some degree the city. The council kind of gets to decide on how that's all apportioned out, but the, kind of the intent is that the benefiting properties would pay their proportional shares of the cost to do the improvements, because they're the ones that are gonna benefit from it primarily. So this process is all laid out in the, in the tribal municipal code, as I mentioned. I'm sorry, I lost my page here with my code reference. 12.08.030 through 12.08.100, I won't go through all the details of that, but I will say that what we're here tonight to talk about is, the staff would be requesting a motion to direct me, as your Public Works Director, to investigate the formation of an LID to improve northeast Harlow Road and to bring back a report. That's really all we're doing tonight, is directing me to do this investigation, prepare all the information that's required under the code, bring back a report for you all to consider. Once, if you, if you choose to do that, when I bring that report back, I've listed out in my staff report the various information that will be provided. At the very least, that information is what will be provided, and then you will have an opportunity to deliberate on that and determine if you accept that report and want to move forward, make changes to the report, change the approach, or just decide, nope, nope, we don't want to do this at all. If you decide to move forward, there will be further steps in that process, including public hearings, where property owners that are affected can testify and be heard. There is also an opportunity under that code that the affected property owners, if two-thirds of them object, it could stop the entire process altogether. Now, I will say that in this case, I mentioned those non-remonstrance agreements. The purpose of those is the, the developers that have provided those non-remonstrance agreements for those properties would be barred from, from providing that formal objection, so they could not vote against it, if you will. So really, that's all I'm asking you for tonight, is just a, to give me leave, if you will, to go forth and do, perform this investigation and bring back a report to you for further consideration. But I can't do that unless you make a motion to direct me to do so.
So questions? Yes.
It's getting late, but would a Bancroft loan fall into place with this LID?
That I would have to look into. I only have a very limited, familiar with Bancroft bonding, and Ettromki is probably much more familiar with it and may be able to respond to that.
Yes, typically, you have to apply immediate. Yes, typically, you have to apply immediately, within 15 days, I think, of the date of completion and delivery of, the way ballot measure five and 50 changed all of this, the, the city can't put a lien on property until the work is completed. At that point, they deliver the property owner a bill for it and the property owner has then a very short period of time, about two weeks, to request that it be spread over 10 years and, and it's Bancroft law. And it's collected then at the same time as property taxes, which is just a normal collection way. Anyone else? All right. It seems like we used to do these once in a while, but it's been quite a while.
The city has had a few LIDs in its past, but they were quite a few years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, okay, public comments on this matter? Anyone in Zoom wish to comment on this matter? We're going to be voting, just to direct staff, we're not voting on the meeting final, but we are going to be directing staff to bring forward a investigative forming an LID, local improvement district.
Mayor Rittma, Paul Elcock, Troughtail?
Yes.
I'm very familiar with the area. We used to have a storage space at the airport stories there. The main thing I wanted to mention is I read Travis's staff report. He did a really outstanding job of explaining what an LID is. So I just wanted to throw an extra compliment to Travis for his work. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else in Zoom? And if I can follow up, in fact, he was correct when he said that the Harlow Road used to connect through to downtown. I'm looking at a 1940s topo map and it did connect right through. To Harlow? Yeah, yeah. Harlow Street in downtown, yeah.
If you work here long enough like I have, eventually you stumble across all kinds of old things and learn all kinds of history.
It's famous because the city had a grade crossing with the Union Pacific Railroad that they, they simply, for no consideration from the city, or to the city, asked, "Would we mind vacating that?" And the city just stupidly, this was way before my time, but just said, "Oh, well, we'll never need that." Anyway, it's just been a source of irritation for a while. The public comment in the room on this matter? All right. Does anyone care to make a motion? There's not one in the packet, but...
I'll make a motion to adopt a motion, well, to direct the Public Works Director to investigate the formation of a local improvement district for the northeast Harlow Road street improvements project and to submit a written report.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Council Andrews?
Yes.
Council Allen?
Yes.
Council Wong? Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Council White?
Yes.
Council Davidson? Council Lamy?
Yes.
All right, very good.
I will go forth and investigate.
Yes, we look forward to that. Staff communication?
Yes, Mayor, real quickly, as best as I can, number one, you have a busy rest of March and April. I'm sorry, but that way you deserve your summer break in July and August. We are having a work session next Tuesday night to discuss revenue options. We're also having a work session on April 1st to discuss the results from Eric Jensen's surveys of all of you about city manager qualities. But we will not have a meeting on March 25th, which is during the spring break week. The two work sessions on the 18th and the 1st will be starting at 6 o'clock, so a little earlier start, so hopefully you can get done sooner. As you, second of all, as you heard earlier from Ms. Hunter, on April 5th in Sandy Palisades is the Wildfire Safety Fair. So if you want to be, it'll be advertised on our electronic media and it's in the Champion on that date. Thirdly, we had a tree planting event last week. It was very successful, got lots of volunteers. Three trees are planted and we have some pictures on Facebook, if you want to find it on our Facebook page. You'll see a lot of great pictures of people out there volunteering. And finally, you soon have the joy to get your SEI from the State Ethics Board to fill out your form and Sarah will be sending those to you the next week. Just make sure you get those filled out and filed with the state and everything's on your door. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Council Communications, we'll start with Zach. Do you have any...
Yeah, I guess the only thing I wanted to say that I think was I said, at least on my end, was just a thank you to staff and Marley and Erica for amazing job on the reporting. Really appreciate it. Very thankful for everything you've done and everything you continue to do to drive business in downtown, everything. Appreciate it.
I thought it was a good meeting. I would like to talk about Imagination Station if we need to put that on a agenda item. I took a lot of pictures and there's a lot of things that need to be fixed there and I'd like to talk about that more in detail.
Don't doubt for a future council meeting.
Absolutely, I understand.
Just with our Public Safety Working Group, we were, met last night. We still have a lot of work to do and we are definitely, I think, leaning towards re-establishing our own police department, which will take a lot of time and effort and asks from not only people at this table within the city, but from council to make these things happen, which I think are integral to the safety of our city. So again, we're, as I say every time, we're taking and being very careful with our thoughts and use of your money and your tax money and our asks of you will be very direct and for specific reasons that are very important, so.
Very good. I, in view of the hour, I think I will pass. Yeah, I'm getting lots of calls. People are asking about the smell. They have not showed up yet, but I'm seeing a lot of bird activity that we don't normally see, so they may be coming. I'll keep you posted.
Welcome, Council Andrews. I didn't get to meet you last week, but I'll say welcome and I'll just be with that.
John?
Very good meeting tonight. I did notice this weekend, it looks like we're a step further away from moving up to the main building. Because the main building is now at Berries.
I noticed that. Anyway, all right, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Sucking.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah, John, that building is going to...